We have a full house in our Zoom meeting, so we are good to go.
Great, I appreciate that. Welcome and good morning. This is the Wednesday, October 11th, 2023 Council meeting, and I'll now call it to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Kai Plaskin, can you join us and start us off there?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Breckus.
I'm here.
Doer.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Ebert, absent at this time. Taylor.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Shevey.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. We're going to start off this morning with a brief moment of silence. Councilmember Ebert and I were able to attend last night an interfaith gathering of the Jewish and non-Jewish community in supporting some of the ongoing issues in Israel and the Middle East. So I just want to take a moment of silence for that. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. I will say that Temple Emmanuel led this gathering the other night, and I want to thank them publicly for it. Councilmember Doer, who I know was not able to be there, but did make the opportunity available to us, I thank her for it as well. Public comment?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. We are opening public comment, which is our first item today. Members of the public may hear and observe and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash L I N K S period R E N O period G O V forward slash three capital Z capital A N capital A Q N. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with Council Rule 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disruptive behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If the behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Our first public commenter today is Ron Trevor, followed by Kai Plaskin, followed by Mark Markell.
Mr. Trevor, welcome. Let's hear how SAVE is doing out there. Always well, I think.
Well, you just stole part of my thunder here.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. Yeah, my name is Ron Trevor, and I'd like to thank council for letting me speak today. And as Councilmember Reese pointed out, I am a representative of SAVE, which stands for Senior Auxiliary Volunteer Effort, and we work for Reno Police Department. Today, I've got the recaps for the hours that were volunteered during third quarter of 2023. We currently have 67 active members, and we have another three in training. During the third quarter, there was a total of 4,543 hours volunteered by members of SAVE. That translates into a savings of approximately $129,475 to the city of Reno. Some of the key areas that were involved were, we had citizen contacts, 6,117. We had 1,875 48-hour notices placed on abandoned vehicles. We did 516 school patrols, had 269 handicap violation citations, and there were 20 stolen vehicles or fictitious plates located and turned over to the police department. That's it. Any questions?
Well, one question. When is the holiday party this year? I want to make sure that we are all able to attend. That's an important one. I know Madam Mayor has for years attended, and it's one of the highlights of the holiday season, so let us know.
That would be, I can give it to you right now.
Yeah, fabulous.
You give me one moment. Sorry. Got a new phone. I'm still stumbling with it.
You and me both.
My apologies.
Oh, no worries.
It is going to be on December the 13th. It's a Wednesday at Eldorado.
Fantastic. We'll make sure that we have some folks here.
We'll look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, Mr. Trevor.
Thank you.
Mr. Plaskin, welcome, as always.
Kai Plaskin, followed by Mark Markell, followed by Terry Brooks.
Good morning. Kai Plaskin of the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance. I'm the president there. We met with city staff yesterday at Craft in Midtown at 6:00 PM, and we went over the micromobility plan, Item D3. And I'm pleased to report that we voted to support Item D3, the micromobility plan that you've been working on for quite some time. And the board asked me, don't mention University Way, Center Street, but you're going to hear it in city's report today. And it's the elephant in the room, as Kerry said yesterday. And so I think that we need to address it to some extent, which is some important historical context, so we don't repeat some of the same mistakes. And, you know, if you remember, city made a promise during the Midtown development to install a protected path on University Way. It was well-supported by professional traffic engineers and studies, and it had a lot of public support. But then Jackie gave me a call one day and said, so you want a bike path downtown? And there was this kind of pull, push and pull over time on, do we put it on Virginia or do we put it on Center Street? And it was just two streets and one mile on either one of those streets. And now this downtown micromobility network is four streets and four miles. It's four times the safety, right? And so that's the reason why we're supporting it, period. It's four times the safety, which is absolutely wonderful. And we do have some questions, and those are pending with city staff. I sent them this morning that some of our board members had sent this morning or sent, talked to us about yesterday. So I sent those to city staff today. And there's areas for improvement. You'll hear that city staff and the RTC like to say that every bike plan needs a car plan. Well, every bike budget needs a car budget. And so if we break out the budgets of these, these plans, you're going to see that up to 75% is for the benefit of drivers. And that's an important point when we're trying to sell these to the general public. We need to be able to say, hey, this also benefits drivers. And, and a huge amount benefits drivers in terms of drivers feel safer, too, when they're not having to try and drive around a biker, right? So there's a lot of benefits to, to drivers, and we'd like to be able to break that out. And that's part of the learning that we're all doing together. And this micromobility plan, Item D3, shows that city staff have learned a lot from the visit of the Dutch Cycling Embassy, which said, you need a network, not just one street. And so that's wonderful to see. And I think that that learning can continue. And we've also seen that city staff and the RTC are engaging with the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance a lot more and a lot earlier as well. So those are the reasons why we support Item D3. I think finally, we'd really like the city to keep its promise this time around. And maybe in a year and a half, we'll all be able to ride bikes downtown safely with children and families. So, thank you.
Mark Markell, followed by Terry Brooks, followed by Barry O'Sullivan.
Good morning, Ms. Terry. What did I call you? Vice Mayor? Okay, shithead. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I, I see council members and city manager. My name is Mark Markell, and I'm a concerned Reno resident. I don't talk very well. I, 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 so I hope you understand me. I, I, I was involved in a drunk driving crash back in 89, and I'm here today to show you people and warn you people about the dangers of driving with a drunk driver and drinking and driving. I, 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 I have troubles taking care of myself. I, I, I just, I, I, I say this to people, so you, you, you don't drive with drunk drivers. This is what happens. I'm a perfect example of what can happen. I, I know there, I, I'm, I'm a goober. I, I don't know what I am, but I'm not, I'm not normal. I had a car land on my head. We, we are doing 100, and we rolled eight times, and I was ejected and landed on my head. The paper I gave, the, the city clerk, the pretty city clerk, says that I was driving, but that newspaper article I gave you guys, it said that I was a passenger. I was in a coma for months, so I don't remember anything. Mainly, I just, I just recollections of, of the police report, and it, it said that we were doing 100, and we rolled eight times. I already said that. And now there, I, I want you people to understand that now there, and I just, I'm just here to warn you people and show you people what can happen if you're a drunk driver, start drinking and drive. It's, I, 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 I think, I'm sorry, I just want to warn you people. Thank you.
Mark, thank you so much for your advocacy, and especially during the holidays. It's a good reminder, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by Barry O'Sullivan.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks again. And today, I'd like to engage in the topic of discrimination when it comes to age. People live longer now than they used to live, and the elderly now need more than they're able to give. When employers look for help, it's the elderly they usually avoid. So the elderly are less likely to become employed. The elderly then are usually the last ones to be hired, but when help is not needed as much, the elderly are the first to get fired. Because of their age, the elderly have a burden to bear, and they have a higher need for good health care. And if they're unemployed and don't receive health care, they will make their burden even harder to bear. Some politicians want to do their best to help the elderly, while other politicians want to avoid the elderly. But a lot of politicians who have won an election and then aged while in office start heading in the right direction. When older people retire, they can sometimes get set in their ways, and then for a long time, they can stay through such a phase. The older you get, the more you've seen inflation, but it can get out of hand way beyond your expectation. Paying rent can be harder to do when it's higher than your social security. That can not only lead to poverty, but can cause a sense of insecurity. The elderly population keeps increasing more and more, but their income doesn't keep up with expenses, so they might wind up poor. With all that they have already done, the elderly should not be ignored. Instead, all of our elderly people deserve a good reward. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and if I can afford to live a while longer, I'll have a lot more to say. Thank you.
Barry O'Sullivan, followed by Trey Abney.
Thank you, council, for letting me come up and talk today. Am I able to project this on the screen?
Yeah, just give them a second, Barry.
And Barry, if you're going to stand over it and talk, can you just make sure you move the microphone with you? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my name's Barry O'Sullivan. I live in Midtown. I have a business in Midtown. I've been there my whole life. I was born there, 1958, before it was called Midtown. I've been involved in a lot of projects with RTC. I've gone to every single meeting regarding the redo of Midtown and Center Street, the one way we converted it down to one lane going north. And about a month ago, I was contacted by the city asking for my input regarding Center Street. So I met over there on Center Street, and this is what I heard, and I was very concerned. They were talking about bike lanes and having the bike lanes go in both directions on Center Street. And we also talked about Center Street from Cheney to Moran on possibly making it narrower one lane, just as we did from Virginia Street to Cheney. I think that was a great idea, and I fully endorse that. But I'm very, very nervous and very scared about having a bike lane going both directions on Center Street. And I start to think about it more, and it, everything that I've learned from when I was a kid to riding a bike when I'm older, is you go with traffic. You never go against traffic. So I Googled it on my phone, which only took 15 seconds, and there is numerous articles from the state of Nevada, from every lawyer in this town, on your way that you should be traveling on a bike, go with the traffic and not against it. So I'm not really sure why the bike lane going against traffic is even an option. I think it's very scary. I, I'm all for bike paths, but I do not believe, if you take this picture and look at it, where the stop sign is, and you're looking to the right down Center Street for the traffic that's coming that direction, you're constantly looking to make sure you can get across, and you're occasionally looking to the left to make sure you don't run across any pedestrians like in this picture. But you cannot see down Center Street if you're parked where you're supposed to, to be waiting to cross that street. And the minute you pull out, and if you pull in front of a bike, and you're already getting people who are crossing the street because you're already across the crosswalk, because you have to cross the crosswalk to look down Center Street. And I know every single person has, has experienced this, because I experience it probably about 10 to 15 times a day. So my thoughts are for this, is I'm very concerned. I don't want John Jesse, I know a lot of people know John Jesse. He's a big bicyclist in this town, and he ran into a parked car, and it killed him. And I would hate to see that happen to anybody, because it's, it's affects not just the bicyclist, it also affects the driver. And that's all I had to say on that one. I do have, am I supposed to talk next? No?
Thank you, Mr. O'Sullivan.
I've got one more to come back up. Thank you for, for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Trey Abney, followed by Damian Cole, followed by Mary Ortega.
Mr. Abney, welcome.
Good morning, members of council near and far, and good morning, Madam Assistant City Managers. Good to see you. For the record, Trey Abney, and I'm here today as the Chair of the Board for Bristol Cone Recovery Center. I'm going to jump ahead to D4, Mr. Vice Mayor, just because I won't be able to stay for that specific agenda item. But I just wanted to thank the city for your commitment to our facility. I think most of you have had an opportunity to go through there. If you haven't, please reach out to me, and we'll, we'll get you scheduled to take a walk. We are a holistic treatment center that deals with addiction, both with opioid addiction, alcohol addiction, and gambling addiction. We offer inpatient people that live there. We have transitional living and outpatient folks there, and we serve hundreds of people in this community. Every year, we get folks from drug court and folks that are in the Medicaid population, so folks that are, that are sometimes hard to find and, and difficult to serve. I want to thank especially Assistant City Manager Bryant and Mr. Hodge for their help and assistance on this. The funds that are, that are in that Agenda Item D4 will be used to go toward our building of a brand-new detox facility. We have an ISOA building on the corner of our property at, at Wells &amp; Mill that will be, we've got the plans drawn up. We've got the general contractor. We've got everything ready to go. Still working with our partners at Washoe County and other partners and foundations that we're working with to make this, to get this a reality. We're hoping to break ground in a couple months. The funds provided here will help us do that. And as you know, we could probably open 10 of these in this community and still not have enough beds for the need here. And so the idea would be, again, a detox facility. We would work with, of course, Reno PD, Washoe Sheriff, all of the health care providers in the community to get folks there. And then they would then be able to walk across the parking lot and get full treatment once they are detoxed from the substance they're on. So again, Mr. Vice Mayor, I won't take any more of your time. I just wanted to say thank you very much to this council and for your commitment to Bristol Cone Recovery Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abney. You know as well as I do how important this issue is to our mayor, and unfortunately, she's with us but in the sky. But I know she's happy about the opportunity.
Damian Cole, followed by Mary Ortega, followed by Benjamin Castro.
Good morning, everyone. Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff. I have three minutes to briefly talk about the iceberg of information that I've been working on for the last year and a half in reference to Item D3 today. Connectivity and design of your bicycle network work together. They are equally as important, and they both work together as cogs in a machine. Ms. Kosky, you've spoken in the past about the network, very important. Other people have talked about the design, including you, the dangerousness of the Center Street cycle track, very important. Key things to understand. There's a difference between bike lanes, a cycle track, and a bike way, or what the Dutch call "feets pad," which means bike path. Everything to them is a bike path, and that's the gold standard. I don't know if this is showing up on camera, but basically, these are the different types of designs. I put this together the other day to try to describe to people what's going on. This is in regards to Sixth Street, but this is kind of universal for just about every type of bicycle track that's out there. RTC is proposing the second version, which is a bike lane with a curb protection on each side of it. This is good for certain circumstance, not good for Sixth Street, definitely not good for Center Street or any other kind of a cycle track. The cycle track on the third one here is where you see the cycle track is counter-directional in each direction, regardless of the, the direction of the street. Doesn't matter. It's still dangerous because cars can still get in there, and you're still on the street. What needs to happen for two-way cycle tracks, quote unquote, don't do those, do bikeways. What is a bike way? Two roads that are side-by-side parallel. This is what the Dutch do. This is over the last 40 years what they have been leaning toward. Two different roads with not just a buffer. We're talking about separation of networks on the network level. Why do I bring this up? Because 50 years ago, Public Works proposed this. 1975. I got this from the Pat Lewis Papers from UNR. This is what Public Works had proposed for the entirety of Reno in conjunction with the City of Sparks and the Regional Planning Commission. The entire Truckee Meadows had a bikeway system that was planned, proposed, and over a three-year period, approved and published in the Reno Evening Gazette. What happened to it? There was opposition. RTC was created, further opposition. The oil crisis of the 70s was over, and we just forgot about it. All we were left with was segments of the Truckee River Bike Path, which we now call a trail, and we don't even mention the word bike. This is all that we have. It's Bike Route 2, and the MUTCD signs are being systematically removed in place of recreational blue signs that do not give any guidance for a total network. Before we pass D3, I, I can talk about this later on. I know I'm out of time. I have a doctor's appointment. I'll try to get back here for the, for the actual item. I'm just telling you that the proposal that is under place right now, the specifics of the connectivity and possibly the design, because we haven't actually looked at the full design yet, we've just looked at mockups, is in contradiction with each other. Center Street is dangerous, but the Vine Street Bridge is not, even though it's a, I don't want to skip your time. Thank you very much, yeah.
Appreciate your work.
Mary Ortega, followed by Benjamin Castro, followed by Lauren Torvenen. Thank you, Damian.
Good morning. Welcome. That moves all the way around. It can do a lot of things, yeah, so make it comfortable for you.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Vice Mayor Reese, Assistant Manager Bryant, and council. My name is Mary Ortega, for the record, and I am the Field Operations Manager for Rise Outreach. I transitioned from our place to the outreach team exactly one year and one day ago. And for my one-year anniversary with this team, I would like to celebrate the success of the neighbors that we have worked with. The 2022 Clean and Safe Report was a helpful summary of all of the work accomplished last year. Now that we're getting close to the end of 2023, I would like to share our total results since the beginning of our contract 19 months ago. 133 of our unsheltered neighbors were able to access replacement IDs, social security cards, and other vital documents. 91 folks were motivated to access local resources, such as getting signed up with SNAP and Medicaid or substance use and mental health treatment, and all they needed from us was a little support. 84 individuals took the first step towards changing their stories by bravely choosing to go into a shelter, safe camp, or a program. 11 people were able to reunite with their family or friends, both locally and across the country. And last, but not least, we have celebrated with 17 of our neighbors as they moved into their own place. None of this would have been possible without the collaborative efforts of Jackie Bryant, Cynthia Sparza, Caitlin Canner, and the Clean and Safe Team as a whole, who provide us with support and direction through every step of the way, as well as Jamie Peake at the Housing and Neighborhood Development Team, who plays a vital role in almost every housing success our neighbors have ever had. I want to extend so much gratitude to you all for supporting our team in this work. Our team of peers share many things in common with the individuals that we serve through shared lived experience, and I feel that that makes our outreach team experts in this field of work. As a person in long-term recovery, myself, 21 years ago, I would have laughed at the thought of someone finding any value in the things that I say or in the life that I have lived. I now get to walk alongside the people I serve and show them how much value they carry, and sometimes even get to hire them onto my team. I hope that you can support our continuing efforts by voting in favor of Agenda Item D4. Thank you.
Ms. Ortega, that was very powerful, and I appreciate your being here. I'm going to ask my staff to meet with you to find a time that we can meet, so I can get to know you a little better.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Benjamin Castro, followed by Lauren Torvenen, followed by Jennifer Kent via Zoom.
Mr. Castro, welcome as ever.
Hi, Vice Mayor Reese. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, Assistant City Manager Bryant. Madam Mayor, council members, my name's Benjamin Castro. For the record, I am the Executive Director of Rise. So I'm also here to ask you to vote in favor for Item D4. Want to thank Mary and our Rise Outreach Team for the incredible work that they've produced over the past two years. Really want to put some of those numbers in a context as well. So it's important to remember that the people we're engaging with are some of the most traumatized individuals or neighbors in our community. These are people that have been through, or they're likely chronically unsheltered for many years, if not decades. They've been through our systems. They've fallen through the cracks. They've lost faith in society. And honestly, a lot of times, society has given up on them. A lot of times, they've given up on themselves. I've had numerous conversations with people who have told me pretty candidly, as soon as I accept the fact that they're going to die here, I can just move on with my life, which is kind of heartbreaking, right? But we don't give up easily. So as Mary had stated, walking a lot of those neighbors through their recovery, through their transition, seeing the life return through their transition, seeing the life return to their eyes, seeing hope come back, treating them as if they're worthy, that they deserve dignity, and that nobody's beyond redemption is extremely powerful. And bringing a lot of them onto our team, I think, has been really beneficial. A lot of our strategy is about recruiting the people that we work with to our team, that reminding them that their experience and that all the hardships that they've gone through wasn't for nothing, because they would have had to gone through it themselves. And when they get to the other side, they're going to use that experience to save somebody else. So I could go on for a long time on that. I think, you know, I've been an advocate and a volunteer in this community for many years, 13-plus years. I know that my priorities haven't always been everybody's priorities, and I understand that. I also understand that sometimes we haven't always seen eye to eye, and I don't envy your positions. You have a lot to balance. You have a lot to navigate through all those challenges, and it's a thankless job. So I just wanted to say I appreciate your endurance through all of that. Two years ago, the previous council made a bold move in bringing us on to the Clean and Safe umbrella. I'd also like to take this moment to thank Cynthia and Monica and their teams, because they've, and obviously Jackie, you guys have been incredible to work with. We've definitely elevated our access to resources, been able to streamline a lot of the work that we do. Yeah, it's been, it's been incredible. This partnership represents more than the service that we actually provide our neighbors. It represents the fact that the people we serve have a voice in the process, that they have a seat at this table, and that their experience matters. So I'm asking, again, for this body to support our work and continue our partnership. And I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castro.
Thanks.
As always.
Lauren Torvonen, followed by Jennifer Kent via Zoom.
Good morning. Thank you for having me today. My name's Lauren Torvonen, and I am here to speak in support of item B11. I moved to Reno in 1995 to get my teaching credential from UNR, and I have lived only on the 500 blocks since that time. I'm currently a teacher. I have a great principal who let me take a break from my class today to come here. So I probably won't be able to stay for the whole meeting in here, so I wanted to give public comment. These are some of the photos I shared with the NAB. We attended our NAB meeting about a month ago. And this, I just documented the same car parking in our neighborhood, and these are date stamped, and you can follow along right there. That's my house in the first one, and they are right in front of my mailbox. They're parking in the stub between two houses blocking a driveway. They just moved.
Lauren, can you move the microphone over to, yeah, just let it follow you. Thank you.
And so it's, they leave to go run an errand, and then they come back and use our neighborhood as the parking lot. So you can see it's that same car over and over, but it's like that for all of the cars. We have become a parking lot. Some other items are, they did, when the city did come, part of their study, they did cite some vehicles that hadn't moved, and you can notice it has the same citation eight days later. So even though it says, please move your vehicle, they don't move their vehicles. They just are, it's just disregard for what we're trying to do. We also have people parking in front of the fire hydrant when there's no parking. We have gotten a lot of garbage. My kids are very good at going out and collecting garbage that's left behind in our yard. We have bird scooters that get left, they get moved, save a parking spot, then we're done with the bird scooter, so we're going to throw it in your yard. So it's just really changed the dynamic of our, of our neighborhood. And we decided a while back to have one point of contact, and that's me, so that we're, because we all called, a lot of us called parking, and the same person said, oh, I'm going to call your neighbor later, and I'm going to call this neighbor. So I do speak for a lot of the people in our neighborhood, I would say a majority. And I think with the information that you will see when B11 is, is up, you'll kind of see the process that we've been through. Something I do want to make sure I show today, this is a new one, I just took this today, that's in front of my house. And they were cited. This envelope was there the day I came here for NAB, which was September 12th. I took a photo today. This car has not moved since September 12th, and they don't move. This is what has happened in this last year. I've lived there, like I said, since 95. It's never been like this. We have lots of people parking, but they used to leave. You know, they would come to the game. They would come and attend classes. We didn't have garbage. We didn't have the speeding. We didn't have the in-consideration for our homes. But in this last year, now we have it all the time. It is a 24/7 parking lot, and the data will support it. I am just sure to please, I hope that you will support us getting residential parking permits, because it's not something we really wanted, but we have to have them because we can no longer live in a parking lot. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Torvonen, for your advocacy for yourself and your neighbors. Can I ask, before you run off, which is your school and your principal that was so gracious?
It's Principal Mike Gifford. I teach at AACT High School. I teach math.
Fantastic. What a great school.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot for being here.
Ms. Torvonen, if you can actually stop over here, too, for a second. And then our next commenter is Jennifer Kent via Zoom. Jennifer, we're going to move you over. If you can unmute, state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Hello? Can you all hear me okay?
We can. Please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Great. My name is Jennifer Kent. I am a proud administrative faculty member at the University of Nevada Reno. I'm also a member of the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance and co-chair of UNR's Bicycle Working Group. You may have guessed that I'm also a regular bike commuter, and I'm here because I'm thrilled that RTC is enthusiastically moving forward with greatly improved connected micro-mobility through downtown Reno. I've been commuting by bike for almost all of my adult life. More recently, I've been commuting on my bike with my toddler riding on the back, which I think you may have seen this image of us commuting on campus. I don't know if you can see that, but hopefully you can, because she's very cute. So what that means is that while I used to categorize myself as an extremely confident writer, you know, not too concerned about, you know, having buffered lanes, I am now in that much larger pool of cautious riders who I will only ride a route if I feel absolutely confident that it is safe, that I will not interact with cars very much, that speed limits are low. So right now, my commute currently consists of riding slowly, mostly through parks, and on some of the new protected lanes that have been put in place. That said, when I, when the pilot project was in place through down Virginia Street, I did use that with my daughter, and it was really fun. We, you know, rode down Virginia Street. We went to Sundance Books and picked up some books, and met my husband for dinner in Midtown. That is something I haven't done since that has been removed. I won't, won't ride through the downtown area with my daughter. So I am here to support agenda item D3, and I hope all of you will as well. I really appreciate RTC's consistent and open communication throughout this process. After the Timba meeting yesterday evening, I'm now, I am very confident in the decisions that were made by the city engineers. And I'm also really excited about the increased connectivity that our city will see. I know they told us it was four more miles of safe routes through downtown. So yeah, I'm just really excited to add downtown and Midtown to my regular riding route. I know that there are many out there like me that are busy with work and kids and life, and that can't be on this meeting, so I'd like to, you know, speak for all of them. So yeah, thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to this project moving forward, and I hope you all support it.
Thank you, Ms. Kent.
Vice Mayor Reese, with that, we have no additional public comment. For the record, we did receive 10 comments, which were general in nature or not directly associated with an agenda item, prior to 4:00 PM on October 10, 2023. These comments were voicemail and/or written correspondence received via our Reno.gov online public comment form or by email to our office. Copies of these comments have been distributed to the Reno City Council and will be available on the Reno.gov meeting portal. Two comments in favor, two comments in opposition, and six comments of concern from several individuals. Give me just a second before we officially close.
Ms. Palmer, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. My name is Robin Palmer, and I need to put on my glasses so I can see what I wrote. Imagine that I'm wearing my climate advocate hat right now. Kudos to the city of Reno for all that you've done to get us to this point this morning of considering a micro-mobility plan to improve access to and the safety of walking, biking, and scooter use as means of transportation. According to the area's 2014 greenhouse gas inventory, which is available on the city's website, and terribly in need of updating, transportation was the second-leading contributor of greenhouse gas emissions, contributing 30% of climate pollution, over 820,000 metric tons. Over 80% of that was vehicular traffic, and I suspect the majority of that 80% was single occupant vehicles. The RTC's data shows that over half a million daily vehicle trips are under five miles within the McCarran loop. How many of you, whoops, how many of you and you traveled five miles or less this morning in a fossil-fuel, fueled vehicle tanning our clean, and I'll tell you, quite cool air in the Truckee Meadows this morning? Transitioning to a clean energy economy includes changing the way we get around. That means transit, rail, electric buses, EV cars, e-bikes. We need to promote micro-mobility in our region. In alignment with the city's Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, promoting micro-mobility can further decrease the area's greenhouse gas emissions while reducing traffic congestion and improving air quality by promoting walking, biking, and transit connectivity to make it easier for the public to access more sustainable ways to move about, and at the same time, enhancing road safety for all road users. Safety is enhanced by increasing separation between transportation modes, reducing the number of accidents. Micro modes of transportation are space-efficient and offer a sustainable, healthy, and cost-efficient ways to travel. See, I'm running out of time, so I'll cut to the chase here. Wearing my bicycling hat, I came here this morning to oppose D3, because as it's outlined in the packet, it does not include the Center Street University Way Corridor. I rode Center Street to get here this morning. It's one of the most frequently used and dangerous roads in the city of Reno. I'm not privy to the discussions with the Bike Alliance, but I'm happy to hear that they now support the micro-mobility plan. I urge you to continue to include the Bike Alliance at the table and listen to what they're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer.
Okay, Vice Mayor Reese, and with that, we have no additional public comment, and we are moving on to item A4, approval of the agenda and announcements from Assistant City Manager Bryant.
Yes, thank you very much. We have item I1, where the applicant has withdrawn the appeal, so that hearing this evening can be canceled.
Okay, I1, so no evening hearing. Thank you so much, Ms. Bryant. Okay, can I get a motion, please, on the remaining items for the agenda approval?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Taylor, a second by Ms. Doer. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item A51, can I get a motion to approve without corrections?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Taylor.
Second.
A second by Mr. Martinez. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, the consent agenda items, we have public comment on these items at this time.
We do have public comment. Our first public commenter is Barry O'Sullivan, followed by Tom Dunn.
Thank you so much. Mr. O'Sullivan, welcome back. I've heard that famous last words before, Mr. O'Sullivan.
Can I have this here again? Again, my name is Barry O'Sullivan, and all I'm here to do is give two thumbs up to the City of Reno Public Works Department. About a year ago, I was asked my input regarding Sinclair coming into Hockum. This has been a nightmare for about 50 years for me. As you can see, Sinclair used to come right into the crosswalk, and everybody was trying to get in front of traffic. So they were always going so fast, and they're always looking to their left to see if they can get in front, and there are, nobody's ever looking at this crosswalk here. We met, they asked me what I thought. I said, it's perfect. That's how it used to be when I grew up. It came around, it stopped into Hockum, you turned right and moved down the street. It is so much nicer. I thank them. I give my two thumbs up to them. And Cleo Wilson, who also came out, wonderful, wonderful. He wanted the input of not just me, other neighbors, and thank you again. They're great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. O'Sullivan. Mr. Dunn, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Mayor, Assistant City Manager Bryant, members of council, for the record, Tom Dunn, representing the proud men and women of Reno Firefighters Association. I am here today to support item B10, which is the augmentation to the Purvis Station Dispatching System. I can tell you, as being a 24-year firefighter at the Reno Fire Department, that this station dispatching system that we've just implemented this year is one of the best health and safety measures that we have done in my career here. We, as of today, we are at over 38,400 calls for service. This year, we're expected to run approximately 52,000 calls for service. And this new station dispatching system is making our lives in the stations much easier at night, especially in our multi-company stations, whether we have an engine, a truck, and a rescue, or engine, a truck, and an ambulance, whatever the case may be. So having the ability of being able to zone off those calls to the proper apparatus that's responding, not having to turn on white lights in the middle of the night in the fire stations is an improvement, and so we are here to support this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
All right, Vice Mayor Reese, for the record, we did receive six comments associated with a couple of different consent agenda items. Those have been logged into the records and are available for the public on Reno.gov. So with that, we are moving on to items being polled and disclosures.
Okay, thank you so much. Let me start with Ward 1. Do you have any items, Ms. Breckus, for the consent agenda to be polled?
Yes, please. I would like to pull items B11, B12, and B18.
Okay, and just to reiterate, it's B11, B12, and B18 for you, madam?
That's correct.
Thank you so much. Ms. Taylor, do you have items from the consent agenda?
No, Mr. Breckus.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ebert, do you have anything at this time?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Breckus, did you pull 12 also?
Yes.
Okay, all my, did you pull B18?
Yes.
All right, then, I'd like to pull B6. And I think everything else has been pulled.
Okay, so B6 is the additional one for you. Thank you so much. Let's go to the phones and ask on Zoom, Mr. Martinez, do you have any items to be polled at this time?
Nothing from my end. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, and Ms. Doer, anything at this time?
B5.
Okay. And then, Madam Clerk, I'm going to identify that B12- Okay. And then, Madam Clerk, I'm going to identify that B-12, which has been pulled by Councilmembers Breckus and Ebert, will be heard not sooner than 1:00. And so that will not go in the normal order. We'll take that out of order when that arises, but sometime after 1:00. I suppose if we're still here at 1:00, we'll see what happens there. It may just be that it'll be trailing to the end. We've got some folks who wish to participate from the municipal court, but they're in chambers and in, on the dais this morning. So just a note for my colleagues. Okay. Okay, now that we've pulled the items, I had nothing to be pulled from the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve all the remaining items?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Taylor.
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Ebert. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's start with Item B-5. Is that correct?
Item B-5, pulled by Councilmember Dewar.
Ms. Dewar, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just wanted to pull this off to identify the work that our police department has done in obtaining grants, and I wanted to give an opportunity for our police chief to just tell us a little bit about this grant, if you would.
Okay, Ms. Nance, Chief Nance, thank you so much for being here this morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Chief Nance, for the record, so this is a 1.5 grant in earmarked fund from the federal budget that will allow us to grow our forensics unit and continue that process of developing more in-house forensic, a bigger in-house forensic team we're able to process more evidence.
And it also mentions, Chief, something about complete, community-oriented policing services?
So. So why that goes into how we're processing evidence with the additional software that we're going to obtain that makes it easier for our community members to identify items of evidence that are booked, and different ways for us to be more communicative and responsive to our community.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to congratulate you, and I'm sure the whole council does, on continuing to look for these opportunities, apply for them, and get them so that we can increase our efficiency and effectiveness in our policing. So I just wanted to personally thank you and just get it on the record, a $1.5 million grant. Kudos.
Thank you.
Chief Nance, I wanted to thank you publicly for being present last night at Temple Emmanuel. Oftentimes, I know that it is not necessarily in the job description, but really taking the lead in assuring our citizens in this community, especially members of the Jewish community, of their safety. So thank you for being there last night as a representative of the city. Councilmember Ebert and I know very much appreciate your being there and being the leader that you have shown us that you are. So thank you for that.
Thank you. It was my privilege to be there.
Any additional questions or comments at the time from the body?
I'd also just like to say thank you for the support that the Reno Police Department and you specifically have shown the Jewish community. Thank you for being there last night. It was very, very important. So thank you for being there.
Okay, Councilmember Dewar, can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, I would move to approve Item B-5.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Dewar, a second by Ms. Taylor. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Item B-6, pulled by Councilmember Ebert.
Okay, Councilmember Ebert.
I'm secure. This was just to say, great job on getting these grants. Again, this is awesome. I was able to go to a closing ceremony for a Veterans Dinner for, uh, the Wounded Veterans Games, and it was just really great to be a part of that and hear their feedback and how appreciative they were for the equipment that we have available. So I just wanted to say thank you for starting that program in April and just for pursuing these grants to kind of expand that and keep them going. So thank you.
Wonderful. Eric Edelstein, for the record, and on behalf of our Parks and Rec team, most of which are at a conference in Dallas, which is why I'm standing here today, yeah, appreciate the support and very proud of the work they do. Thank you.
Yeah, it was very, very well received by the veterans group that was there. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Ebert, thank you for your consistent support for our veterans. I know that you have really taken a heart for our veteran community, and you directed council-directed funds on a number of occasions to different programs. So thank you for highlighting that important work. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Ebert. I'll second. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item B-11, pulled by Councilmember Breckus.
Okay, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, I'd like to staff report on this, please.
Great. I, hi, Amy Pennington with Public Works, for the record. I do have a presentation prepared. All right. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Again, Amy Pennington, for the record, Special Projects and Outreach Coordinator for Public Works. This item is for the proposed residential parking zone. It would be Parking Zone 15 in the Putnam area, just west of the university. Oh, that's not clear. Okay, there we go. That work? There we go. All right, so just a little bit of a background on parking zones. RNC 6.07 is where this is derived from. Parking zones for residential areas are petition-driven by the residents, and they need to be verified by city staff. We have code enforcement go out and verify the needs of the area as well as the public works staff to verify and evaluate. The vehicles have to be proven to cause congestion or a burden on the neighborhood, and for it to be implemented, it can't be opposed by more than half of the homeowners in an area, and then it comes to council for approval. And the map that is on the screen right now shows some of our current residential parking zones. Most of the parking zones that we have in the city right now that are residential are in that northwest region near the university. So the proposed parking zone on Putnam, in the Putnam area, there's a map of it right now. It involves, it's the east of Washington Street, Putnam Drive, and Creighton Way, and is, basically encompasses a, like a neighborhood little circuit there. It looks like Putnam Drive goes out towards Sierra Street, but that's actually not a through street. The street is stopped where the green shape ends. There's actually a barrier there, and the road doesn't go through. The picture on the site is actually where that area is, and so, as you can see, cars regularly park in that cove. So we received a request from the property owners on Putnam Drive, and code enforcement did go out to verify the area. They did two different days. They did traffic studies where they came out at two different times, in the morning and the evening, and evaluated the cars there. It was found that 75% of the vehicles were not registered to residence in the area, and so we went through a public outreach process to verify that this zone was indeed the desire of the neighborhood. We did a postcard mailer to all the homes with a survey attached. We received feedback from the vast majority of the homeowners, and there were, there was a bit of a mix of responses, but the majority was in favor. We brought it to the NAB to get further input, and about a dozen of the residents showed up and provided additional comment, and the NAB board wanted me to make sure you knew that they were in support of the item. So there are pros and cons to parking zones, which is why we do want to get the input of the neighborhood because it does impact some of the ways that they can use their neighborhood. The pros are only residents of guests, sorry, I have a typo in here. Only residents and guests of residents displaying a parking pass can park on the street. Guest passes are available to each home free of charge, and you can purchase passes for the number of bedrooms you have in your home where you can register a vehicle. And the cons are, there are more parking restrictions on the street. So, you know, that, it just does impact how one goes about their life if there's more restrictions. Parking passes can cost, or they cost $26 annually, and there is a limited number of space available on the street. We do actually measure the neighborhood to make sure we don't oversell spaces for cars. So there's 112 spaces for 56 properties in this neighborhood. This is some of the results from the survey. We contacted 56 property owners. We had 39 unique responses to the survey, and 79% of the residents were in support. And so this is the recommendation, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pennington. Ms. Breckus?
Yeah, so we have a lot of new people who haven't been around since we worked on the master plan and adopted it in 2017. But one of the work items that was strongly advocated by myself and others was to revise the parking program and stand up a unique parking division, which we have not done. We're doing the same things we've done, which is relying upon this code, and I think it shows a number of flaws in how we are managing parking. But I just want to say, the parking issues, if anything, have just exacerbated in the last two years. My office reviews the service requests that come through each quarterly or month on the report, and last month, 25% of the issues coming through Ward 1 were parking. I've, for so long, had a hotspot up on Summit Ridge of parking. It's a high multifamily area, a lot of on-street parking, abandoned vehicles, that sort of thing. This exceeded, accelerated during the pandemic. And just coincidentally, or not coincidentally, but it's evidence, not quantitative, I estimate at least 30% of my outreach this summer with constituents was over parking issues. One of those is that the city of Reno made a decision to not require off-street parking for a number of developments. So some developers are then building cheaper product, good for them, good hopefully for renters and buyers, but they don't have parking, and now they want to privatize the parking on the street. And we need some ground rules. This is relying upon the old ground rules, and they're not correct. And one, I'm sympathetic to the person who came forward today to say, you know, people are parking all over. Look, they're between my mailbox, they're in my walkway, they're between driveways. You know, I live south of California in Arlington. I have a lot of that, too. I live across and under, across the street from an underparked multifamily building and have that, too. You know, if they're blocking my driveway or someone's mailbox, that's life. If they're a walkway or mailbox, but if they're blocking the driveway, that's a problem. But the argument was, we need this parking program so we have better enforcement. Well, we're not enforcing what we have right now. There was evidence by the speaker who showed a parking citation that had been sitting out for, you know, a month, a month or so, noticing that we don't have people going out and, you know, towing vehicles, booting vehicles. We don't have the parking program. So the logical conclusion is not that we're going to have more regulations in an area. The area, the logical conclusion is the city council needs to do what we said we were going to do in 2017 and look comprehensible, comprehensively at the parking division and program. And I want to speak a little bit about the flaw on this one in particular. Under the rules that limit the council discussion, I only have three minutes to talk on this very big topic that, because the council hasn't had a strategic workshop in four years, I've been hoping to bring forward as a council priority, but haven't had that meeting in four years. So I've got to stop right now, and the chair will allow rotation to other people, and then I'll get maybe, I'll get another three minutes to discuss specifically some of the flaws that I see in this recommendation. But staff is just doing almost rote administration of a code that I think needs an overhaul, and this council has said, we're going to overhaul it. But I'll cease now.
Thank you, Ms. Breckus. Does anyone have any with Ms. Ebert? The floor is yours.
So the staff report we have says that 50% of the residents, if less than 50% of the property owners don't object, correct, we can move forward with this? And that includes people that just don't respond at all?
That is correct.
We count them as not objecting?
Yes.
Okay, so we had 22 people respond out of 56. So that's, that's less than half of the property owners have responded, and of those, 9% or nine people said no. So that's, you know, less than half the people.
Um, you know, actually, can you move that part? Because we had four responses in that one second. Just want to make sure I'm following the numbers as you're sharing them. My apologies.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, we, go ahead.
Okay, so 22 people responded yes, nine people said no. So, you know, less than half of the people responded yes. There is a pretty significant amount of people that did respond that said, no, we don't want it. So I'm a little concerned about making this decision to do this with only 22 people out of 56 saying they do want to move forward with it. I mean, that's a pretty significant amount of people that just didn't even respond. So as, in regards to the passes themselves, I assume that there's going to be some kind of proof of residency that's required to purchase these passes?
Yes, and so just for the first part, part of the reason why we went to the NAB meeting was because there was a mix of responses, and we wanted to make sure that we heard from the neighborhood and were able to address any questions or concerns. So, so we did, after that, we went to the NAB and invited all the residents to attend, and there was overwhelming support at the NAB. Some people still had questions or concerns, but there was overwhelming support at the NAB. With the, how to obtain permits, yes, you do have to provide proof of residency, and the clerk's office administers that process.
Okay, so at the NAB, was there any requirement to show proof of residence in this area when they had their overwhelming support of this parking zone?
No, we did not check people's residency when they made comment at the NAB.
Okay, okay. So my other question would be enforcement. I know that we spoke, you know, during our briefing prior to this meeting, that people can submit Reno Direct tickets for people that are parked without a pass, and the public commenter we had today showed vehicles that were already cited. How is that any different? You know, how, how is the parking enforcement going to be any different than what we currently have? It looks like people are being cited for parking there. They're just going to get tickets and not be?
Yeah, I'd love to pass this off to Director Woodley.
Thank you. Good morning. Alex Woodley, Director of Parking Code Enforcement. Yes, ma'am, the tickets that you observed there requires a 48-hour, 72-hour observation of a vehicle to be able to issue said ticket. Once you have specific restricted parking within that area, if you don't have the tag, then you will be issued the ticket immediately. And the ticket is a lot more expensive and more impactful than the 48-hour ticket.
Okay. And is there going to be any kind of limits on how many passes a resident can buy? Is it, you know, are we going to make sure that all 56 residents can get a parking pass, or is it going to be kind of first come, first served? Because I imagine that these homes.
Well, my understanding of how it works, ma'am, is you are limited. Each dwelling has only so many that they can get. Of course, you know, first come, first served is typically the approach for the most part in that particular neighborhood, because I actually walked that entire both streets. They do have, unlike other parts of our residential parking where they don't have a driveway, they don't have a garage, these do have garages, and they do have driveways. So there's a very good chance that we might not have individuals seeking those passes because of the fact that they have four parking spots on site. So that is very common that may occur in this particular situation.
Okay, so these residents have four spaces already, and they're requesting?
Yes, ma'am.
Permit so that?
I went out there in response to the constituents' complaint. I went out there twice personally, in the evening and in the daytime, and it is bumper-to-bumper parking on the street. The individuals that I saw park actively, they would park their vehicle, and they would walk towards Sierra Street. Even though there's a, some blockage there, I think pedestrians are able to maneuver around it, but you can't drive through it. But, but I did see the need, of course, being, doing the fact that we do parking enforcement, we're not looking for more areas to have to patrol. But, but I definitely, it's undeniable that there's a need for some help there. Because both days that I went, it was bumper-to-bumper parking on the street, and the majority of individuals did not live in that area.
Okay, so these residents have four parking spaces available, but they would like to potentially have five or six available via parking permit. I'm just trying to understand.
Director Woodley, if I, if I may, so since we issue the passes, the way that it actually works is that my team goes in and goes to the Washoe County Assessors website, and we, it, we identify how many bedrooms are associated with each dwelling, and then you get one permit per. And then you get one permit per bedroom, as indicated for the Washoe County Assessor's office. There is a total number of spaces that are identified by the traffic engineer. So they go out and measure the street and say, this street can take ten cars. So we take that total number and say, Zone fifteen is, is eligible for one hundred cars to be parked in that area and we won't exceed that number of permits being issued. So it's governed both by the number of, the number of spaces on the street in addition to the number of bedrooms per dwelling.
Yes, but these homes also have driveways and garages, correct?
Which is correct.
Okay, so what I'm saying is they would have their driveways and garages and an additional guaranteed spot on the street?
They would be eligible for that if they needed it, so yes, I would say yes.
Well, I, I would also, you know, kind of echo Councilmember Breckus's concern. You know, we, we approved a project on, what was it, Zero Riverside Drive where they did not have one space per door. So I, I feel like we're being inconsistent if we move forward with this. These, these residents will have driveways, garages, up to two permits, guest passes for the residents. And we have other areas where we're not mandating one space per unit, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hebert. Uh, let's go to the Ward Five representative, Ms. Taylor, do you have comments?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would just say that, um, you know, the, the, this is a positive example, I think, of government working for you. But the residents had a challenge, they reached out to us. Our team went out and did the work, they did the research, collected the data, did the outreach, went above and beyond. Went to the NAB, noticed everybody. And, um, the residents can't park in front of their houses. And I think that you guys have done a great job. And having, being one of the newest members, I still have experience. I know some people on this body don't see that, but I appreciate your work. And I appreciate the neighbors and their patience, this has been a long process for them. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Ms. Taylor, thank you so much. For my part, I'll make a few comments. Number one, uh, Ms. Breckus is not wrong that this council has had some history in the parking space. I think part of what happened is that we had a longstanding employee of the city of Reno who's no longer with us, Ms. Hanson, who was spearheading some of the changes and ideas about how we might resolve parking or, or move parking forward more as a citywide undertaking, right? Parking is an issue in, in every city in, in this country and in the world because, uh, we have a very car-centric focus. And whether you're in midtown and can't access the businesses you want because the people are not having enough, you know, meter attendance to do it, or whether or not we have to change our systems that allow people to pay and park from their phone. I mean, there's things to do in parking. So Ms. Breckus is not wrong that if, uh, among the various priorities that a city has, parking is one of them. I think over the last, I would say, five or six years, this council has prioritized through the budgetary process, uh, police officers and enforcement, so to, to the expense of probably parking enforcement. I don't know what Ms. Director Woodley would say about how many folks we have in the parking enforcement, but I know it's less today than it's been in the historic past. Meaning we have a larger city that's growing, but we have deprived that particular department in, in enforcement of the resources because we prioritized policing and fire and a whole host of other things. So, um, our budget is always a reflection of what we value and perhaps what we have valued less is issues surrounding parking. Uh, in conversations with my colleagues over this particular thing, I note that it's really a form of incrementalism. Ms. Breckus is not wrong, we need as a council to address parking. We have other priorities, uh, it doesn't maybe rise to the level of a level-one priority. Although for the residents of this neighborhood, it is obviously their number-one priority. So it's one of those things where I think, um, Councilmember Taylor wisely, uh, given her depth of experience as a human being, knows that when citizens come and complain, their complaint is the most important one that they're dealing with. And this neighborhood is unique and challenging because it's adjacent to the university. And as the university increases their parking pass fee into the thousands of dollar range, students who are squeezed by an economy that's not working for them are finding creative places to park. And they're parking in this neighborhood and walking across the street to go to the university. And so we can either stick our head in the sand and hope that parking will just magically resolve itself, or we can take an incremental approach which has fixed this issue for this neighborhood, for these residents now. Um, I don't find that to be inconsistent with, for example, Ms. Ebert's comments about Zero Riverside. Right, as a function of our building code, we have said, in order to encourage more micro-units, which are cheaper to build and cheaper to rent, uh, we are going to reduce parking requirements. There is a depth of literature that would boggle the mind about parking. Uh, Ms. Breckus has pointed out one of such, uh, pieces of literature, an eight-hundred-page tome, uh, uh, and treatise on parking and, and being overparked. We can do this project, and Ms. Taylor is right, we should do this project, without having to necessarily make every decision that one could make in the entire universe and history related to parking. And in the budget, when that budget workshops start to kick off after the first of the year, if parking is your thing and parking enforcement is the thing that you believe is the most pressing thing in the city, I'm sure you'll bring your, uh, interest and, and inquiries in that regard. Uh, but until then, uh, this is a, a good and, and, and good fix. Uh, staff has come up with a, a, a good fit for this neighborhood. And I think the public commenter was squarely right, uh, it is desperately needed in this neighborhood. So I'll be supportive when the, uh, time comes.
Mr. Reese?
Ms. Duer, thank you so much for letting me know you were there, but, uh, I, I hope I have not stolen any of your thunder and I'll give you the floor.
No, I am generally supportive, I like to solve problems and I think that this is, uh, exactly what we're supposed to do, is to hear our constituents and help resolve day-to-day issues, so very supportive. I have just a few questions about how, uh, the program will be rolled, rolled out. And it just wasn't clear to me, and I wanted to get clarity on the record. So I want to understand, on these streets that were covered in the green color, can anyone park or only those people with the pass?
Um, only people with a pass will be able to park.
So using your example, let's say someone has four bedrooms and they could have four passes, but they also have space in their driveway. It, it presumes though that they could take up four spaces on the street? As well as their driveway, right?
It would also depend how many vehicles they have.
So they have to share the number of vehicles they have and the number of passes they need?
The passes get, uh, uh, Mickey actually.
Okay, well, while she's getting ready, um, I also have a question about the enforcement. I think a really good point was brought up, if we're not enforcing today, in other words, we put a notice on a car and it says you need to move the car and the car isn't moved, and eight days later, the car is still not moved, and a month later, the car has not moved. What are we gonna do to address that? So those are my two primary questions, who can park? And, and ancillary to who can park, so if you do not have a pass, I mean, presumably if you do not live in this neighborhood, you cannot park. So no university students could park, even if there was a space. I mean, university student or not, no one could park unless, even if there was a space to park, right?
Or, or if they were in possession of a guest pass from one of the residents.
And how do you get a guest pass?
Um, residents are able to obtain them, from the clerk's office.
Like, uh, for like one incident or a permanent guest pass, or how does that work? Maybe Mickey could explain.
Yeah, I'll let Mickey speak to it more specifically.
Hi, Councilmember Duer, so yes, the, each residence is eligible for one pass per bedroom and they get one guest pass per residence as well. Um, and so to your question related to, you know, how, if they can park four cars in the driveway and four cars on the street, um, I guess, you know, we don't govern how many cars somebody does or doesn't have, but they would be eligible for the four passes related to it. So when they come into us, they have to identify proof of residency, so they live or rent at home. They have to provide, um, a photo ID to show that they are who they say they are, associated with such documentation about residency. Um, and then we do require valid, um, vehicle registration to tie to that address. So there's a series of things that my team double checks on to make sure that they can issue those passes. But we don't deduct, um, part, we don't deduct passes based off of driveways, it's just not written in code that way.
Yeah, I get it, but it does mean that we could end up with, since there's a hundred twelve spots and hundred, fifty-six residents, and I didn't understand, do all have driveways or just some?
The majority of the homes at least have driveways, I don't know if every single one does, but it's a neighborhood with driveways.
Okay, so today's world, they have their driveways to park in, but I, I understand this sort of random parking and the speaker mentioned people blocking access to all kinds of things and basically parking illegally in front of, uh, fire hydrants and so on. So I want to get to the enforcement issue. Does anything change on enforcement with this new program?
Good afternoon, Alex Woodley for the record, um, good afternoon ma'am. So with regards to enforcement, when we have restricted, uh, parking, uh, required passes, that's an immediate enforcement. Any other type of parking would require us to go back, for example, dead storage or in excess of forty-eight hours. So currently, right now, any vehicle can park in a public right-of-way unless it's restricted parking. So once it's restricted parking, which is what will occur here, then if we roll up today and we observe vehicles without the pass, they will receive an immediate hundred-dollar citation.
A, a citation?
Yes ma'am.
Like a, it's like a, a, a parking ticket?
Correct.
Where it's gonna accrue fines if they don't pay it?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, but what if someone, um, you know, we just had some documentation from the speaker that cars are parking there eight, thirty days in a row? And I think our ordinance is that you can only, um, park in the street in one same spot forty-eight hours, is that correct?
That is correct, yes ma'am. That is correct, if we, if we are aware, if we issue a citation to a vehicle and we're made aware that that vehicle is still there, then we will follow up. Fortunately, we do have a proactive approach specific for restricted parking, such as these for the neighborhood. So we do go into the university area every week. All four officers go there and issue their necessary citations specifically for that. So if we do have that particular violation, they will get cited again. And if we have a total of five violations?
I, I, it sounds like I'm over time, cause I heard the buzzer, but I just wondered, who's responsible for towing aspect? Like they, they're a month.
Exactly, if they're there a month, if we've issued five citations, then we'll tow it.
Five?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Duer, thank you so much.
Right, I would just, Mr., Mr. Vice Mayor, I would, I am supportive of this item. I just, uh, I do think we should revisit it after a time, um, based on how it's going. So if there's a lot of room on the street, uh, let's say only half of the spaces on the street are being used by the residents for one reason or another, perhaps we can revisit that in some way, but I don't know what that is, so I'm willing to move forward today for sure.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Duer. Mr. Martinez, did you wish to weigh in on this controversy?
I did, thank you so much, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to get some clarification on the timeline. I also agree with Councilmember, uh, Taylor that, um, this is definitely an example of our local government being, um, an assistance or we're listening to our constituents and making sure that we're responsive. And so I just want to get more clarification on the rollout as well. And when this would be implemented, if we were to pass this today, how does it look like? And when can residents start applying for these permits?
Thank you for the question, Amy Pennington for the record. Um, Public Works will work with the clerk's office on the implementation rollout. And they'll be, um, it takes time for them to get all the addresses into their system as well as for us to do signage and outreach to the neighborhood to let them know about this change. Um, the permits are issued in line, in line with the calendar year. And so, um, I, I, I would, I'm hoping that we can, um, move in a way where we could have permits for January.
Sorry, I was having some issues with my microphone. Um, I appreciate the clarification. And for people that will be getting, uh, any notices, uh, will there be signage that goes up in this neighborhood? And what is the notification to the residents or renters in this area?
Um, we, there will be signage that is added to the neighborhood. And as far as, um, how we would reach the residents, we will, I haven't actually done exactly the mode, but, um, we'll probably do another postcard mailing to them, um, which was very effective the first time for noticing. And, um, we will, um, go through other kind of ways that we typically notice people about new things, whether it's, um, you know, pub, the, using the Ward, um, NAB and using different ways to let them know that this is happening.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, uh, what the game plan was and I appreciate your efforts and Councilmember Taylor's leadership on this.
Ms. Pennington, if you would, please put up the map of Putnam.
Sure.
Again, I think it bears noting that this neighborhood is a neighborhood that was built probably thirty years after the neighborhood it surround, is surrounded by. And the reason why this particular, uh, neighborhood, um, is a challenge is because the secondary access at the end of Putnam there, which borders on, uh, the park, which is Rancho San Rafael, allows people who are on foot to walk through the park from the university and into this neighborhood. Were this a neighborhood with no access for people to be on foot, we would not have this problem. Because you would only be able to access it off of Washington, uh, and getting into that neighborhood. So it's a very unique, uh, pocket neighborhood, we'll call it. I don't think that what happens here is like precedential and sets some grievous precedent for how we do parking or code enforcement. It really is the physical layout of the neighborhood with the secondary access that only can be accessed on foot that is allowing students to park in this neighborhood. And so, again, I, I think as a practical matter, uh, you've done what you can with the code we have. Uh, Mr. Woodley, I thank you for being here today, uh, and shedding some light on it. Obviously, we have much larger discussions that need to be had about what our value is and what do we place our value on parking and parking enforcement. Uh, that is a citywide issue, not necessarily directed only at Putnam and Creighton. Um, but again, I think, um, you've come up with as a staff and, and with Ms. Taylor's leadership, a, a fine solution here. I'll come back now to the body and see if there are any parting comments. I think everyone's had one opportunity to comment, does anyone have additional, oh, Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
I see things a lot differently than how they're being discussed here. First of all, um, if we had, had the steps that we talked about, we'd have some poli, bo, policy clarification of what, what our values and policies are about on-street parking. Some see it as, you know, something that should be privatized, and that's really how this ordinance works. It is an enhanced private property right to give someone a pass to park out on the street to the exclusion of others. It's very, very clear, okay? I think a best practice is to look at it differently. If people walk in from another area, ranch or the university, to use that public resource that we all pay for, everyone in the city pays for our street program in one way or the other. You know, that's a very different value. And those are the conversations that we were gonna have when we put this, not as a budget item, but as a work program item to tell our city manager, this is a priority of the council to deal with. And I think at some point, all the heads will go together and say, we're busted here. We're spending so much time in this department, that department, that department, we gotta get our head together on, um, on-street parking management and parking garages. And oh, by the way, they run self-sustaining like an enterprise fund. They pay their own way when you get them right, that's the best practice. So the comment is, well, we can visit this in time, is when you give someone enhanced private property right, and this is one, they're hard to pull back through a regulatory environment. I'd like, Ms., um, Pennington, would you come up? I'd like to discuss a couple flaws in the logic here and put that under the screen, thank you. So they talk to, we know that about fifty percent of our Reno residents are renters. That's probably lower in single-family homes, but we're up by the university where I think it's probably on par. I took this photo a few days ago, okay? And she said that the, the input had twenty-six percent of homeowners giving their feedback. Well, how many of those homeowners lived there? How many of them are using it as investments in their business? Probably a lot. So if I'm a homeowner in Colin Ranch or California with this property right here and seeing the way this goes, I'm like, heck yeah, I want that property right for my tenants to be able to park on the street. Cause the first thing I'm doing is telling UNR leaseholder, you know, a UNR student who leases, right, in those two cars, you're the on-street parkers, I'm getting a permit to fill in the garage and create two more bedrooms. And, you know, this enhances my business model, that's really what happens. And that is part of the flaws in this problem. These people now can add a, actual, added bedrooms and have parking displaced onto the street. It helps their business model, it excludes other people, excludes UNR students who are up on that area and they want to come back and forth. And most of all, if you could put on the map, it's very well-known by users in, um, this part of town that the gates at Rancho San Rafael close at sundown during the winter months. And people who get off work and have to go out exercise in the daylight, they all. they all park on Washington and Putnam. Now, they will be excluded from parking on Putnam, and they'll be pushed down on Washington, which is kind of a busy street. It's safer. And I've sent, you know, a child up there, a teenager, to park on Putnam when you've got winter hours, because they're walking into Rancho. They don't want to get caught with that gate closed, because it's a bad deal for a park user. And it's also, it doesn't matter if you have a special event, whether it's balloons or the, you know, cross-country meets, whatever. People are now excluded from this area. It really is not a right approach. I'm sympathetic to the residents, but the answer is doing better enforcement. All those ones that she showed, if someone's parking there, we need to be towing or booting immediately. Those aren't UNR students staying there with unlicensed vehicles or for twelve days. That's not a UNR student. That is someone dumping a car, and that happens all over. This will be precedent-setting, because I know a few Ward One neighborhoods that are more impacted, and they'll be coming asking this council for the same enhanced private property right. I really think we're, we're approaching this wrong. I, I understand there's a desire to, you know, well, this is what they want, but we don't work like that. We work on what's best for the public interest, and this is exclusionary to a whole lot of people. And it doesn't follow through with that practices or really what a value is. That parking on-street is a public resource. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Breckus. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Ms. Ebert, the floor is yours.
So I just want to say thank you, Amy, and I just want to say that I appreciate the work that you do. And also, I just want to state that deliberating this process and reviewing the staff report is in no way an attack on your work. It's part of the process. It's part of our role as council people to deliberate and decide whether or not we think this is the right thing to do. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. When we deliberate, it's not a personal attack. It's our job. So I'm going to call that out. But I do think this might set a precedent. This is an issue in my neighborhood. I've been warned for it. I'm nowhere near UNR. We don't have enough parking on my street. I frequently have cars that park right in front of my house for days. I've actually gotten HOA fines, notices for cars that aren't mine in front of my house, and I have to notify my HOA. Not my car, I don't know whose it is. I can't put my trash cans in front of my house because I have cars parked in front of my house, because we don't have enough on-street parking. So I am concerned that this will set a precedent for areas that are paying attention, that struggle with on-street parking. And these are people that don't necessarily have garages, driveways that accommodate for vehicles currently. So I, I do think we need to really consider this, that this is setting a precedent for other areas as well. So that's my comment.
Thank you so much. Ms. Taylor, I'm going to come to you for a motion.
I think, Mr. Vice Mayor, I move to approve proposed residential parking zone fifteen for Putnam Drive and Creighton Way.
Okay, it sounded like, Ms. Duer, you were wishing to be heard before we called for the motion.
I, I was.
Okay. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. I just want to say that I think my colleagues have brought up very important issues related to privatization. I've heard in, in, you know, the ether that there are proposals by private businesses to privatize our city parking in downtown. And I'm, I'm not supportive of that, and yet I am supportive of this. So I wanted to go on record that I, I don't want this to be considered, well, we solved a problem here and we're going to continue privatizing parking on streets. So I do think it is a step in that direction, but I don't like the direction. So I wanted to just be clear before we vote. Secondly, I do think, Ms. Ebert brings up a really good point. There are parking issues throughout our city. And my biggest concern is our lack of enforcement. I don't think it's right that we need to have five notices before we tow. I thought we only had to have two. So I have a question about that. And I also have a question about, do, do violations have to be called in every time by the residents? I, I would have thought our staff would follow up, like if they issue a citation, I would have thought they would follow up to see if the vehicle moved or not. You know, in other words, they issue a citation, are they following up? So I still, this, this whole discussion has raised a lot of issues for me. I too, like Ms. Ebert brought up about Zero Riverside, I'm very concerned about whether it's there or some other place, not including enough parking on-site, pushing that off on the street. Let's say we do it, and that case, we may have a request on Riverside to have a parking permit program initiated there too, because they can't park anymore. So I think this brings up a lot of questions. I'm willing to support today, but I really would like to see our staff think a little bit more globally about the issue and the direction our enforcement is taking generally. And, and really put some thought and work into that, with or without a strategic plan. This is a issue that's plagued this city for a while. And I think I'm looking for some larger solutions from our staff. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Duer. Okay, I'll come back to the body. I have a motion by Ms. Taylor. I'll second the motion. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to two. Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we're on to item B eighteen because we're trailing B twelve. Am I correct?
Correct. Councilmember Breckis pulled item B eighteen.
Okay, before we do that, do I have any disclosures on item B eighteen?
I pulled this item. I'll let him go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, fellow city council members, and Madam Clerk, in the interest of full transparency on item B eighteen, I am disclosing that I am employed by TMCC. On this matter, I have sought guidance from the city attorney's office. I have been advised, as an employee of TMCC, I have a commitment in a private capacity to the interests of TMCC. Here, item V eighteen seeks approval of the donation to the TMCC Foundation to support TMCC's International Education Week to recognize and celebrate our local and global diversity in the context of education and the amounts of seven hundred and fifty dollars. TMCC is a public employer, not a private business. I did not request this donation, and the donation will not in any manner affect my employment at TMCC. I have been advised that the independent judge, independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would not be materially affected by my commitment in a private capacity to TMCC. Accordingly, I will be participating or voting on this item today. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting pertaining to this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Breckis, you pulled this item.
Yeah, I did. And I have the same disclosure. I'd like it adopted. I won't, I'd like it adopted for the record as my disclosure, what Mr. Martinez just read. And I likewise will be voting on that. I am also an employee at TMCC.
Okay. Any additional concerns or comments at this time? I'll come to you, Ms. Taylor.
Can I just, I'm sorry. City Attorney Shipman or Carl, is that sufficient for a disclosure from Councilmember Breckis?
Yes, and just to put it on the record, I just want to put some additional legal reasoning on the record. I don't think after, and it was a quick review on this when I got the notion for this, but I think because TMCC is, in fact, a public entity, essentially a governmental body, it doesn't meet the definition of a per, of a person under NRS zero dot three nine. That excludes governmental entities. Again, because TMCC is a, is a party to NISHI, the Nevada System of Education, which is a constitutional entity. I don't think that even, either Councilmember Breckis nor Councilmember Martinez has any obligation to disclose this as a commitment in a private capacity, because, again, those, that institution is not a person, and it wouldn't apply. So I just want to put that on the record so that if there is a question, the Ethics Commission can, can see what the reasoning is there, and that's kind of late news. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Taylor, thank you so much for this really gracious donation. I'll look to you for the approval for the motion.
I move to approve staff recommendation.
I have a motion by Ms. Taylor, a second by Ms. Duer. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We're moving on to our D items. So we're on item D one. D is in David one.
What about our Charlie items? What happened there?
We don't have any. Did I just miss that?
You. Oh, I have them as C items online, but they're D items. Okay, I apologize. On my staff report, C one is identified as the resolution to augment the budget, but that's a D item? Okay, so item D one, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, item D one, and this should be Lindsay Hatfield and Vicki Van Buren.
Okay, Ms. Hatfield, welcome. I think this may be your first time presenting in front of me. I don't know that we've met one another, but welcome and glad to have you.
Thank you. Lindsay Hatfield, Senior Management Analyst with Finance. I have a brief presentation on this item, and I'll kind of hit the highlights for the augmentation, but there are detailed tables included in your staff report and the attachments for this item if you want more details as far as exactly what's being augmented. So this item is bringing augmentations and revisions through the end of the first quarter for FY twenty-four, September thirtieth. Included are general fund appropriations of twelve point two million dollars. There are grants and reimbursements for various city departments, some revenues that have come in higher than anticipated, and two and a half new positions, which are budget neutral, so there's no impact to the budget for these positions that we're proposing. The majority of what we're proposing for appropriations are carryforwards from the prior fiscal year. So these are funds that were either encumbered or intended for use during FY twenty-three, and departments either were not able to complete the project or receive the goods, services, whatever, before the end of the fiscal year. So we're carrying those funds that are available from FY twenty-three to twenty-four, so they can complete those projects. We're also recognizing some grant and reimbursement revenue in the general fund. We have those for our public safety units, municipal court, city manager's office, and Parks and Recreation. There is a public art grant and room tax that we're recognizing. And then our general capital projects funds, we have two grants there, one from HUD and one from FEMA. We anticipated receiving those funds last fiscal year, but we only received part of those funds. So we are augmenting for the remainder of those grants. All of the grants that we're augmenting for have come before this body and been accepted previously. The two and a half positions that we're proposing to add, the first is a systems analyst for IT department. This position will be responsible for facilitating the new CAD system for dispatch. And it was approved at the August meeting for the E nine-one-one board for a hundred percent reimbursement. So that will be no fiscal impact to the city. We'll receive a hundred percent reimbursement for, for that new position. The other one and a half positions, these are thirty-hour-per-week positions. There's a recreation leader and a senior recreation leader in our Parks Department. These will help facilitate the Sierra Kids school site at the new elementary school. Based on the interest that we've gotten from parents for this new program, we believe that the costs will cover, more than cover the, the, the revenues will more than cover the cost for these positions. And finally, we are proposing additional transfer to the risk fund to replenish the fund balance for unanticipated claims and for the increased insurance premiums. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hatfield. I appreciate that. Let's start with the body. Anyone on the phone on Zoom has questioned at this time?
Vice Mayor Reese, if I might, I just want to state for the record that this item was properly noticed, and we did receive one letter from Councilmember Breckis's correspondence, and it has been included in the record.
Okay, I saw that earlier. Thank you so much.
None for me.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Duer. Let's come now to the room. Any colleagues have questions from the dais at this time? Ms. Breckis, the floor is yours.
Ms. Hatfield, I have not met you either. Are you new with our organization?
I've been here four and a half years, but this is my first time presenting.
Okay, sorry about that. And your director and your assistant director aren't here today?
My director's here.
Oh, she is?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. I'd like to bring up my email, if you could. This is something we do quarterly. It's part of our budgeting role. And it is the first quarter one, so it's usually the most involved, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So there's a lot that goes into these. And I have, for the past ten years, sat with finance directors to go through the back data on them, the tables. You mentioned some of the tables, but there's a lot of narrative that needs to go in. And when I had my agenda briefing on this and knew the first quarter one was coming, I asked to meet with Ms., what, what's going on here?
The time has not started to Ms. Clerk.
Okay. I asked to meet with Ms. Van Buren, as I have for ten years, to go over the data. And she, she agreed, but what I got immediately after was from our city manager. Is that up there? Okay. And I asked this to be included in the record for this item and another item that's very large and important budgetary. And it says, the purpose of this information being included here, I'm sorry, did the time jump? Because I, I didn't. Oh, okay. I asked to meet with Ms. Van Buren, that's what it says. Then Mr. Thornley, after the agenda review, sent the following email and restricted my access to our finance director to ask about this item on very technical information. You know, council's biggest job is to hire, evaluate the manager's performance, and set the budget, and this is part of our budgeting activities. And Mr. Thornley said that I couldn't meet because of memorialized hostile treatment from, of our team that I have. That is not true. That is not accurate. Our team is very professional and knows that our job here is to do our job, and a lot of that involves the fiscal and overseeing the organization, policy setting. And actually, Mr. Thornley is the one who has been hostile and is currently under investigation himself, launched by the city council for improper government actions against me. And so it's a twisted reasoning. And if you could scroll down to Mr. Thornley's writing to me. "Councilmember Breckis, as per my previous direction, please review the documents associated with the augmentation. Send your questions in writing to me." No other member of the body has to provide information in writing to Mr. Thornley. And this is for every department to understand what's going on with their budgets or their activities. And we will make sure they are answered and timely. You are not authorized to meet with staff because of your previously memorialized hostile treatment of our team. It should be of concern to every member of the public that a member of a council body cannot meet with a finance director, in particular, about one of our greatest charges, and that is going over this budget. There is a lot going on in this budget. I have tremendous concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Breckis. Any additional questions or comments by? Okay, Ms. Ebert, we'll come back to you. Any additional questions, Ms. Taylor? Okay, Ms. Breckis, I'm going to come back to you for another round of three minutes?
No, I don't want three more minutes. I am not going to participate in Q and A of items that really need an hour of the finance director's time once a quarter. And I was not given that.
Ms. Breckis, hold on a second.
No, no, please don't interrupt me.
Ms. Breckis, I am the chair of the meeting, and I'm not interrupting you. I'm trying to give you the time you asked for. You decided you did not want it. We don't have a running commentary. If you wish to use your three minutes of public comment to continue this line, you are welcome to do it. But we are not going to do it off time.
So am I cut off now?
No, if you would like to use your additional three minutes.
Yes.
The floor is yours.
As I was stating, this is an item of great complexity that requires an hour of time for me to understand, to do my job. For those reasons, I will not be asking for Q and A, particularly because this body only gives us six minutes of Q and A to understand incredible, complex items. So I will not participate. I will not vote in favor. And I want to call out how I am not able to do my job on the most important efforts, efforts that I was voted in here to do. And so, thank you. I will yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Breckis. Ms. Ebert, did that give you enough time to get?
Yeah.
Started? Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I do have some questions. So one of them that particularly jumped out at me during my review of the staff report was a line or a budget item that was forty thousand dollars for demolition of four hundred fifty-five Pompey. So one of the things I want to call out is four fifty-five Pompey is a location. First of all, it's, it's not a complete address. It's four fifty-five Pompey Way. And I, I don't recall us voting on that. I just would like to have a little bit more information about that. Is that something that was discussed prior to my coming onto council? Is that something that was discussed prior to my coming onto council? Why are we just now voting on $40,000 demolition of a, of a property? And is this a property that the city of Reno owns? I, I looked it up on the county assessor's website, and it looks at the, like, the city of Reno acquired it in 2021, but I'm not sure if it was a purchase or what happened there?
I actually don't have that level of detail with me today, but I can look into that and get back to you. This item, though, is not approving any sort of demolition. It's just recognizing the revenue that we've received.
Okay, so we received $40,000 for the demolition of Pompey?
As far as I understand, but I can, I can get you more information.
Mr. Call or Mr. Shipman, do you wish to weigh in on this matter?
Yeah, maybe to pride the record, Mr. Vice Mayor John Shipman for the City Attorney's Office. But this property came into the city's possession through the Lemon Valley litigation. So this was what, it was the Walls residence? So this was part of the settlement agreement. It was a purchase of that agreement, and with the notion being that that property would be demolished, and then that would be additional capacity for flooding.
Okay, so this was a result of the flooding, part of the settlement, and the city of Reno took ownership?
So that's how we got the ownership, and then, and it was, and I'll just leave it at that. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, just because I'm fairly new to all of this, so the augmentation is to do a $12 million increase to what we had already approved, correct?
Yes, so the majority of that is carryforward that was remaining from the prior year because we didn't spend it. We anticipated spending it, and we didn't. So it's an excess fund balance at this point that we're carrying forward.
Okay, so, so the $5 million allocation to the Risk Fund, is that because we used the entire $5 million previously? Like, is this usual that we would need to allocate $5 million, like, quarterly for this fund?
No, we, we wouldn't normally do this quarterly. This is to replenish the, the fund balance that we, we generally try to carry in that fund because of the increased settlement costs and insurance premiums.
Okay, okay. All right, and then I did have another question. The Title 45 rewrite, is that, is this the business license rewrite that we're working on?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, and then, just to confirm, how, how do we fund our budget? What's a primary source for that?
C-tax and property tax.
And how have we been doing with our projections on C-tax? Have we been meeting that, exceeding that, falling short?
I'm not prepared to discuss C-tax today, but I think our director could bring that back in the future.
Okay, so that's not something we can get an answer on while we're discussing our budget?
We're, we're not augmenting C-tax or either of those revenue sources today.
Okay, okay. Well, I just feel like it's relevant, you know, when we're augmenting our budget by $12 million. I think it's relevant to say, you know, are we meeting our projections? Or exceeding them, or falling short, just so that we could be wise as council members when we're, you know, allocating funds and...
At this point, we only have one month, I believe, of C-tax that's come in for this fiscal year. So we only have July.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Ebert, excellent questions. All, any other questions from the board at this time? Okay, I'll come to you, Ms. Taylor, for a motion.
A motion to approve the augmentation revisions from July 1, 2023 through September 30 of 2023.
I do have another thing I remember to ask about. I apologize.
No problem. We'll, we'll come to you now.
Okay, so a few more questions. In regard to the, hold on here, I'm sorry. I have so many folds on here. I'm trying to find it. So if you can just bear with me real quick.
In the meantime, Lindsey, can you pull the microphone just a little bit closer to you so that the recording picks you up? Thank you.
Yep.
So Public Works, can you explain what that, what falls under that category? That's not any kind of public structures we would have, correct? That wouldn't include, like, the Record Street facility or anything like that? Or can you tell me what category that would fall under?
Is there a certain page that you're referencing on the staff report?
I'm asking you if you could tell me what page I would find it on.
Just the Public Works?
Well, I, I'm not sure if that would fall under Public Works, or where would I find the allocations to maintain or, you know, care for facilities that are owned by the city of Reno?
That's under Maintenance and Operations.
Maintenance and Operations. Can you let me know what page that's on, please?
The staff report is grouped by fund, not, not necessarily department.
Can you tell me what page it's on in the staff report?
I'm sorry, in the res, uh, yes, in the state document. I see what you're asking now. Yes, the Maintenance and Operations Department is grouped on this, the state document, under the Public Works function, so.
Okay, can you tell me what page on the staff report that is? On what page you're looking at right now? Six? Okay, thank you. Okay, so it looks like we needed to allocate an additional, a total $8 million for police. It looks like we're ahead for fire. Dispatch is doing all right. So where am I looking now for properties? Public Works, okay. Is there any additional funds allocated for maintaining any city of Reno projects? I thought, I saw something in here about, like, the retrofit we did for City Hall, but I can't remember what page it's on. I'm just looking for help in finding that.
The, the retrofit is actually included in our capital projects, which is a different section. So the, the one I just referenced was for the general fund. Sorry, give me one moment. This is a long report. And that particular, it's page 12. So the retrofit grant that I mentioned, we received part of those funds. We had $4 million that we're receiving for that, and we received part of them last year, and we anticipate receiving the other portion this year. So that's what we're, we're just recognizing here, is that grant that's already been awarded that we haven't received all the funds for. So we anticipate getting, getting the rest of them.
Okay, so is there anything in here about additional costs for the police station or anything like that?
No, this is, there are carryforward amounts, so...
Okay, okay.
What we anticipated spending last year for the Public Safety Center and pool that weren't spent, we're just carrying that balance forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ebert, thank you again for your thoughtful questions. I'll come now back to the body. I think Ms. Taylor has made a motion. I'll second the motion. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Breckus?
Aye.
Doer?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Ebert?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Reese, you do have a passing vote, five to one.
Thank you so much.
Five to one.
Ms. Hatfield, thank you so much. I, I appreciate your thoughtfulness. I know it's not easy, especially to make the first presentation on such weighty matters, and the budgets are complicated. So thank you for leading us through that discussion. You did an awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Madam Clerk, back to you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. We're moving on to item D2, which is a presentation from Justin George and Carrie Kosky.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
Yes. Vice Mayor Reese, we do have one letter of correspondence, again, from Councilmember Breckus. This is included in the record and has been distributed.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Mr. George, welcome. Always privileged to see you.
I apologize. Also, we do have Tom Dunn.
Oh, Tom Dunn, one of my favorites. Tom Dunn, welcome and good morning again.
Sorry to waste your time today.
You're never wasting our time, Mr. Dunn. You know that.
For the record, Tom Dunn, Vice President of the Reno Firefighters Association, proudly representing the women, men and women that staff your fire department. We are here in support of item D2. Once again, in my early career here, 24 years now going on, we had a downtown fire station, which is now located where there is a downtown baseball park. And our fire station facility was sold to a private developer for a dollar, and here we are...
24 years later.
24 years later, actually take it back. 18 years later.
18, sorry.
Finally, getting to the point of replacing our downtown fire station. Every person that's come in front of the Reno Firefighters Association for an interview for public office, we have asked them, "What's your plan for replacing our downtown fire station?" And here we are today, talking about that plan to replace the fire station, and we are grateful for it. After the downtown fire station was demolished, one of our fire companies was working out of the downtown bowling stadium until a temporary station that was only supposed to be in effect for five years was occupied. We are now working on, I think it's year 18, for that temporary fire station. And so by, let's put it this way, by the time this station is built and staffed, that will be retired. But I'm here to advocate publicly for this fire station, and it's a long time coming, and let's make it happen. Thank you.
I sort of don't believe that you'll ever retire, Mr. Dunn, but thank you for being here today. Mr. George, now the floor is yours. Any puns for us today, or how are we going to go?
Next time.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Justin George, Senior Civil Engineer for Public Works. And I'm here today to seek approval to move forward with the Construction Manager at Risk Project Delivery Method for the Reno Fire Department Central Station project. I wanted to start off with a quick clarification that today I'm not asking for authorization to use any funds, approve the design, or select a contractor. What we are here for is ask, just asking for authorization to move forward on the CMAR selection process. I have a short presentation to update you on the status of the project and outline the next steps. So I'd like to remind council that the city, or remind council that the city-owned parcel at 455 East Second Street, the current Reno Police Station, was approved as the future location for Central Station at the March 8 council meeting. This aerial map here shows a, a portion of downtown where current and future fire department facilities are located. And the administration and fire staff at the fourth floor of City Hall, that's that blue arrow on the bottom-left corner, and Fire Station 1 at Valley and Fourth Street will be relocated to the Central Station, which is that red arrow to the right of the ballpark. So the diagram on this side shows the four phases that we have planned to complete the Central Station project. Phase 1 includes the schematic design of Central Station, and when we bring a construction manager at risk, or CMAR, onboard to work with staff, the architect and engineers, to finish the design with direct contractor input on constructability, material and scheduling concerns, and provide accurate cost estimating to help with procuring funding. Phase 2 includes the design development, where the CMAR and team really dive into the design of the building. Phase 3 includes final design concurrently with abatement and demolition of the current police station. And Phase 4 is construction of Central Station. So the red arrow on this slide shows where we are at in the process today. The schematic design is nearly complete, and we are ready to bring a construction manager, or we're ready to start the Construction Manager at Risk selection process. If you recall, this is the same timeframe that we brought a CMAR onboard with the Moana Pool project. So getting to this point included a considerable amount of effort to develop a Central Station concept that will help the Reno Fire Department better serve the community. Our project manager has diligently coordinated the schematic design process with input from the fire department, administration, firefighters, and other city departments. The work that went into the schematic design includes space planning to identify how many personnel and firefighters will occupy the building, identifying the number and size of each type of room and their location in the building, laying out the floor plans conceptually for optimal functionality and efficiency, fitting the building location on the site plan, and then preparing a preliminary building rendering. So back in March, we began the design of this facility with, after approval of consultant agreements with TSK Architects and Dowell, and this is our first look at the conceptual rendering of Central Station. So please note, this rendering is still preliminary, so this is something that will continue to evolve as we move through the design phase and is subject to change as we finalize the design of this project. So switching back to Construction Manager at Risk for Central Station project, we are recommending the CMAR Project Delivery Method. So this is our preferred project delivery method for large facility projects based off of the successes that we've had with the Moana Springs Community Aquatics and Fitness Center project. So this slide right here shows the phases of CMAR engagement on a project. The first step is to select a contractor based on their qualifications. That is followed up by the pre-construction services phase where the contractor works with the city and our designers to complete the design. After the final design, the contractor selects subcontractors and prepares a guaranteed maximum price for construction that will be presented to council for award at that, at that time. Some of the many benefits of bringing contractor onboard earlier in the design phase include identifying construction challenges, budget constraints, material availability issues, and scheduling concerns, along with providing accurate and comprehensive construction cost estimating that can help guide the final design for Central Station. So this slide highlights where we're at in that phase today. We're simply looking for approval to move forward with that qualifications-based selection process. We'll be back early next year to award, or with the approval of the selection of a contractor for the CMAR process and to award pre-construction services at that time. That concludes my presentation. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mr. George, for that. I appreciate your diligence and thoroughness in it. Let me maybe start off some questions, and really I want to focus on the original moment in time some years ago now, where we chose the CMAR process as a way to deliver the Moana Springs Pool project. I think by all measure, everyone on staff and even the city council would agree that the CMAR process has worked fabulously there at the pool, in part because we've got great people building the pool. I think Core Construction has been our partner in that project. But I will go back in time and say that when you first came to us with the CMAR concept, there were a lot of questions from our body because it was an unfamiliar process to us. There are different ways, of course, to build projects, and if you look across our valley and you look at the government entities, each one has taken some variation and liberties with it. And quite frankly, based on the economy and what else is going on in the economy, we have found different delivery methods have been appropriate, given the circumstances. And so I think it was a leap of faith for this council to choose the CMAR process, although it really was, in my mind, a very good decision, and I think has been proven over the course of it. With the CMAR process, is it correct that the, it reduces the risk to us because it allows for sort of the owner, designer, and construction manager to all be in one place? And it makes it so that guaranteed maximum price is what we're scheduled to target and hit? Is that kind of the general, broad reason why you have found this delivery method to be a, a good one?
Yeah, that's correct. The, the early engagement with the contractor in the design phase kind of helps us with that, you know, material selection. They can look at the plans and review the plans and identify areas that we may be overdesigning or, you know, adding a little too much flair to, and we can dial that back based off of material selection or possibly a different type of construction method than the designers have originally anticipated.
And I think from my perspective, as I've watched your team and Core's team work on the Moana Springs Pool, it's really been, you know, fairly refreshing because as someone who was the general counsel for a builder developer for many years, trying to figure out what target you're hitting is part of the issue. And when you start to go over budget and you don't have the CMAR process in place, you're really scrambling to figure out how to continue to meet your budget, right? And so when you have that guaranteed maximum price and that you have the, sort of the history and consistency with your person who is selected as a CMAR, I think that allows, at least from my perspective, us to best utilize the resources we have, in part because as council members, we're, you know, wanting to make sure that we make sure that the dollars are spent as they were intended for the benefit of our, our community who is paying for them. And so, again, I think that we'll have other issues to discuss in future, as you've identified on the slides. But from my process and perspective, the CMAR process... But from my process and perspective, the CIMAR process has proven to be really effective on these larger-scale projects. And maybe they're not, you know, appropriate for smaller ones because there really is no need for a manager to manage that risk. But when you start talking about large public works projects, this really does seem to be the best fit for us as a city, so I'll be supportive. Thank you so much. I'm gonna come to the body and see if there are questions. Ms. Ebert.
Just a quick question, just so I can kind of understand some things that happened. Did we follow this process when we initiated the police station? Do we have CIMAR?
On the Public Safety Center process, that was a design-bid-build process. So, that's one where the architect designs the project through final design, and then we put the project out to bid. So, that, when the project is finalized, is the first chance the contractor gets a look at the process. So, they don't have the ability to give feedback during the design to kind of help and steer the design. So, with Public Safety Center, no, we did not use CIMAR. We did a design-bid-build process.
Okay, do you think that process would have helped at all with risk management and the cost of the station?
Certainly. I think early contractor engagement in that project could have helped.
So, do you think this is kind of like something, a lesson that we learned, so using this process will help going forward to not end up in that situation?
Yes, certainly with the large facility projects, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Ebert, though, I will say, because you do highlight the important question between the design-build and the CIMAR process, I was on-site at the Public Safety Center this week with Mr. George, and one of the things I will say is that our staff is always trying to protect our resources. And I'll give you just a random example. There was some siding that was old and part of the original building, and I asked Mr. George, you know, what's going on there? It kind of, you know, doesn't look that great. He said, well, in the process of working with the architect and the engineers and the project team, we've been able to lower the cost on that specific item. And so, it's not that there are impossibilities in reducing the cost or watching the bottom line, but I think Mr. George has accurately said, it's a lesson learned. But also, I think different economies and depending on what kind of bidding environment you have can change the way in which the design-build process evolves. So, in the contracting world, I think people go back and forth, in fairness. There are some years and some projects which it really works for and other projects which it doesn't, and I think it's hopefully our job to figure out which one works best for all of us. Because I can't say that ten years from now, a design-build project would not be the right method, delivery method. I can say today it's not, but I think it's always something we have to sort of suss out. But you're absolutely right. You've hit the key issue of whether it would be those two. And there are actually other delivery methods, too. I mean, there are different kinds of fee-based ones where the contractor basically throws in with you and they get a percentage of what they save. I mean, there are all sorts of different ways to deliver it, but your question is the good one.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council? Oh, Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Could you bring up my public comment again? So, I was surprised to see this item come up and asked about it during my agenda review. And then, of course, Mr., the finance director said, well, we do have some thoughts how we're gonna pay for this. And then, of course, Mr. Thornley, if you could stroll down to Mr. Thornley, saying, I cannot meet with staff over this issue. Now, in March, you can't, and I went back, and the reason I thought we were gonna have another item come before this was because in March, you said, when we got to thirty percent, then we were gonna dig down into the financials. And that was in response to my inquiry of how we're gonna pay for this. And we haven't had that discussion. I wanted to have some discussion from Ms. Van Buren. She's not here. We're not teed up for that discussion. But is the fifty million still the number we're looking at?
So, I think one of the benefits of bringing the CIMAR on at this point is they're working with us to help us really develop an accurate construction cost estimate.
Well, I mean, let's do this, okay? You know, Sparks is over there building a fire station, and they have a number out there, because I read it in the paper, of how much they're ready to go bond for. I want to know how much Ms. Van Buren's ready to go bond for. The discussion about design-build, like the police station versus the Moana, is not a fair example, because at that point in time, we had less debt. Now, we have more debt, and we have some other obligations that have increased. We need to have the discussion of how to fund this first. Because as you go into the CIMAR, and I understand that's prescribed under state law, right? So, we're gonna go out, we want to be in good faith to the contracting community, but say, this council gets to the point where, I don't know, maybe you have a different city manager, different finance director, whatever, and starts going, wow, we're in trouble. The C tax isn't coming, the federal money's been exhausted, how are we gonna pay for that? Well, we have two ways. We have a resolution for layoffs, which I have had in front of me, or, you know, we're gonna go out for bond. And the council goes, ooh, I don't think we can get there. So, if you're at that point, and you've got a sixty million dollar number down the road, what are the penalties under the CIMAR contract or the CIMAR law if you back out of the project? Are there penalties specified in the agreements?
So, I think we engage the Construction Manager at Risk through those pre-construction services, at which time, upon final design of the project is when they present us the guaranteed maximum point. I think that's the threshold that we cannot pass once we award it. We have to have the funding before we move past that point.
Okay, so you said the next step is bringing the contract forward.
So, the next step, the step we're at right now is selecting the Construction Manager at Risk and then look at a pre-construction services agreement early next year. We don't look at the guaranteed maximum price or locking that in until a couple of years down the road after Central Station has been demolished.
If I could have a few more minutes, I know you were talking-
Absolutely, but let me just also see if there-
During Ms. Ebert's time, like a little more time.
Well, we were engaging in the interim process, and Ms. Ebert and I did that. Can I ask, is there anyone else on the phone who wishes to speak at this time before I come back to Ms. Breckus for round two? Ms. Taylor, it looks like you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted a quick clarification. During the CIMAR, during this process, we're not guaranteeing the contractor anything as far as building the contractor. It is just, we are going through the Construction Manager at Risk process to get to a design, to get to a construction price. We have no obligation to award them a contract for building, and that wouldn't even happen until we look at the GMP, agree on it, and even at that time, we would have an option to go out to a different contractor if we wanted to.
Correct, yes. At the time of the GMP, which is further down the road, is, that's the correct process.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Breckus, I'll come back to you now.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Dewar, I'm gonna come to you, and then I'll come to you, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, I just, a couple points. Excuse me. I just, I wanted to thank all of our staff for their diligence in getting us to this point, and for the fire department for their patience in us getting to this point. This is huge for our entire city, what we're about to embark on here. This is a, there's been a lot of background work, and now, we would actually be selecting the CIMAR contractor. We're actually being, allowing our staff to go out and, you know, request proposals to be our CIMAR contractor. But I think it's, we really got to spend one moment and think about what a significant step this is for our fire department, for our city as a whole. I'm so glad that we're here. The second thing I wanted to ask is a question. I wondered from Mr. George if he had an approximate cost at this time, I mean, even a ballpark? Or no?
Not at this time. I think that's what we're still working through in the schematic design process and looking for feedback from a CIMAR on.
Okay, all right. Anyway, kudos. I'm glad we're here today. It's very exciting. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. George, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate you sharing all that good info with us. I also want to echo some of the comments already made. I think this is a great moment for our fire department to see the body, the council, supporting their efforts and recognizing that those temporary spaces that they're a part of are just not par to the level of service that they're trying to provide for our community. And so, I appreciate all the efforts done by the Public Works Department to get us to this space and making sure that we're taking the right steps to make sure that this is successful for our fire department. So, again, thank you for the information, and looking forward to supporting this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Ms. Breckus, I'm gonna come back to you now.
Thank you. So, Mr. George, so up until we get the guaranteed price, the designed, are we paying them for them for design?
So, the Construction Manager at Risk is paid for pre-construction services, which would be an agreement brought to council early next year.
Okay, and then, and then the guaranteed price. Okay, so, I get that, but I just want to bring back, you know, not telling us a price, you know, I'm gonna go off the fifty million because that was what you brought in March, okay? Maybe it's increased, maybe you've been able to shave it down, but fifty million, council, colleagues, staff, too, because, you know, having a discussion about how we're gonna buy something for fifty million, we just went over how much is in our full budget, you know, without having a plan, is just not how it's done in the world of municipal finance and management. If you go back to the budget session, when we closed out our budget, we pulled away from paying for some things that we have policy that we're gonna pay for, and those were the OPEB, the Public Employee Benefits. And we didn't fund that, so we're already shorting things. And look, there's no bankruptcy, there's no, there's no loan modifications when you commit to debt. It comes out of operations, and that's why in two thousand seven to two thousand nine, this body that put themselves into a lot of debt laid off a third of the workforce. I really don't think we should go here until we have a full financing plan that public work stands down, finance comes forward, and explains how we're gonna do that. One thing this might involve, council, is selling some of our assets. Next thing you know, is, are we gonna have a fire sale on South Side School? Some people are looking at the CAC to use that for other purposes. Is the manager gonna come forward and say, look, we've got to sell the CAC at a fire sale price, we've got to sell what's known as the leers of fire sale, we need to do twenty million dollars of property sales to get you here. That precludes other options. Council, you are not going into this step with full knowledge, and you're also not even following the information that Mr. George said you would have when you got to this step. You can go back and read your, you know, watch it, like I did, and you said, at thirty percent, we die down into the details. Now, I also want to say, because staff has always been very professional and does know, you know, what we're doing here, and sometimes they're put up to just, you know, follow directions. We're a hierarchical organization. Mr. George, no wrong, you know, mention against you, that's why I brought up Mr. Thornley not giving me contact and making false allegations about me and how I do my job and keeping me from doing my job. The buck stops with him. He is not here, but he is having you move forward with contractual agreements for a fifty million dollar outlay that you don't even know how you're gonna pay for it. Not, not a good step, council.
Okay, any additional questions or comments from the body? Hearing none, I'll go to Ms. Taylor for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I move to approve staff to pursue the Construction Manager at Risk's CIMAR Project Delivery Method for the Reno Fire Department Central Station project.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Taylor, or second by Ms. Dewar. Any other questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I vote no.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, acting, can we have a fifteen-minute break?
Let me just look at the agenda one second. Happy to do it, except that please remember, we have an attorney-client privilege meeting when we take a break.
That information never came to me. How did you get that information?
It's on my calendar.
When did it populate?
I don't know.
Mr. Attorney, can you explain that? I did not, I was not aware of that.
Yeah, we sent a request yesterday to scheduling, and I think scheduling put it on people's calendars.
Ms. Breckus, I think you have wisely pointed out that we've been on the dais now for two and a half hours. We have, the next item on the agenda is D3, is that correct, Madam Clerk? And that may be a larger presentation, so we're gonna go ahead and break now until, we'll say we'll break till one fifteen, and that gives everyone the opportunity. Do you want, do you need a little longer, Ms. Clerk?
No, I guess my recommendation was more so the majority of the members that are in the audience right now are waiting for D3, so if there is an opportunity to hear D3 so that they can go ahead and be about their day, that might be better suited for those who are waiting patiently since this morning.
Okay, so let me see what the will of the body is. We can take a ten-minute break, a comfort break, come back, hear D3, and then take a lunch break.
I think we break once. We don't have a lot to do. I, you know, sorry, folks, but I think we should come back in a half hour at least, or whatever attorneys are gonna do, but that's my preference.
Understand, and I apologize to the folks in the audience who are waiting so patiently and diligently. We have had a busy morning, and we've got some business that we've got to do off the dais, so we're gonna be in recess until one fifteen.
All right, Vice Mayor Reese, if you are ready to reconvene, it is 1:18. And at this time, it looks like council members Martinez and Dour are both back onto our Zoom. And we're reconvening without Mayor Shibi, so it is 1:18. And we are on item D, as in David, three, which is a presentation from Carrie Kosky.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we do that, I want to welcome to our chambers two of Reno's finest new recruits to our police department. I understand you gentlemen are with us today, although not yet to the academy. You're spending some time with us as we get you to that point. I think that's a great thing that Chief Nance has really put in place where, although our academy has not started, we know that you're quality folks that we want to have and tie up. And we don't want you going elsewhere. So they've invited you to participate and watch our hearings here today. Both of you gentlemen have my deep sympathies and gratitude for having to see us in our glory, but also know that that's part of our job is to interact with you all. And sometimes it's hard to see the connections between the department that you are sworn to represent and the city council, but there are lots of them. And so welcome, nice to have both of you here. Madam Clerk, item D3, and Ms. Carrie Kosky, welcome. May I ask, do we have public comment on this item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. We do have some public comment on this item.
Well, let's welcome those folks to give public comment before Ms. Kosky's presentation.
Okay, I would just like to reiterate our standards for council chambers as we do have some new members. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to the item in front of us, which is D3. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. In accordance with council rule 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disruptive behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If the behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Our first public commenter is Bernie Carter, followed by Damian Cole, followed by Thomas Albright.
Mr. Carter, welcome. Always good to have you in chambers.
Thank you. I try not to be here very often.
Smart man.
So thank you for allowing me to speak today. To be clear, we are in favor of bikes in downtown Reno. The question is, where would they be the safest for both themselves and the motorists around them? Where would they be positive for the area and where would they be detrimental? I will speak today only about the Center Street corridor versus the Virginia Street corridor. Selecting Center Street for bikes, in our opinion, would be reckless. Center Street is a one-way street that carries primary vehicles, traffic from Mary Street to Sixth Street. Center Street from Liberty to Sixth Street has over 15 multiple vehicle accesses and four high-rise garages, including the city's own parking garage. These do not include private residences or controlled intersections. In our own building, we have over 50 parking spaces entering and leaving on Center Street. Mill Street has 33 parking spaces that are one-way that all depart on Center Street. The combined parking off Center Street may count several thousand. That means several thousand cars per day entering or exiting on Center Street. Center Street also provides D cell and X cell opportunities for many of these parking areas. The Pioneer Auditorium uses Center Street often to load and unload road, road shows to their venue. Our own property has a left turn lane to allow slow down and enter. The Virginia Street Bridge was, when the Virginia Street Bridge was built, we lost our access to Virginia Street. In contrast, Virginia Street from Liberty to Sixth Street, excuse me, Center Street from Liberty to Sixth Street has four entrances for buildings. The, the major auto generators have an auto access on either Sierra Street or Center Street, but none on Virginia Street. You recently completed a study that I believe indicated the majority of Virginia Street is inactive. I've been told it's either a chicken and the egg situation. No one will improve their property unless more people are there to access it. But no one will come downtown without a reason to be there. I think we showed in Midtown that the real answer is chicken. Invest first. Be bold, introduce bikes, walking customers, begin the process of enhancing Virginia Street downtown. No one stops their car to walk into a store on Virginia Street. But they may do so if they're riding a bike. Maximize the opportunity to make our city center a vibrant one. Allow bikes on Virginia Street and protect those bike riders by keeping them off of Center Street. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Damian Cole, followed by Thomas Albright.
Good afternoon. Sorry for, I'm tall if I'm going to do. I'm tired of like leaning forward. My name is Damian Cole. I have been, as you know who I am. So, um, thank you for hearing me again. Item D3. I always blank out when I come up here. The reason why I'm not happy with how D3 is being presented is not because it's presenting a bike network for downtown. Even the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance is celebrating the fact that the city and RTC is committing to this. What I have as a protest against this is the way that the public process, in quotes, was handled. The very foundational question is, where should we have these? The public was not included with this. The engineers decided for themselves based off of statistical data, here's where we are selecting the bike routes. And what do you think about them? Do you like them? How, how safe would you feel on them? Things like that. We needed to start from a space before that. We need to have public hearings, workshops to discuss with the community in a collaborative effort where people would find the routes the most helpful. Everyone knows that the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance has had the longstanding opinion that Center Street is the best place. I agree, only if there is no rest of the network. If that's a single road down, that would be the best route, which is what RTC studied. However, considering the entire network, which I showed you in 1975, was created for the entire Truckee Meadows, where would the best route be downtown for a non-stop, try to stop as few as possible times bike route? I came to a different conclusion. I came to Evans, which could connect up to the bike way, which could connect up to Holcomb, which gives you a straight shot down separated from car traffic. I'm not on the side of putting Center Street, bikes on Center Street. I'm on the side of taking Center Street, putting a bike way next to it. Separate road for its own bike. Now, that was decided, the cycle track version, the designs I showed you were not deemed safe. I agree, because you're putting bikes in a two-way cycle lane, a dual cycle lane on one side of the road. That's part of the road network. Can't do that for speeds that quick, for that much congestion, can't do it. However, paradoxically, I am seeing that RTC is saying we can put bikes on Vine Street Bridge, which is not a viaduct, it is a clear span arched bridge that goes over the freeway and has two side streets that are also named Vine on the side. It was made in the 1967s as consolidation for through traffic when the freeway was made. However, one street over, we have Washington Street. Double the width of Vine Street, much safer, level of service is still way down, and it connects you to Keystone via Seventh and up to, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
The public process was, it's not there.
Thomas Albright.
Professor Albright, welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having this opportunity for us to voice comments. I am Tom Albright for the record. I'm a professor of geography where I teach physical geography and sustainability, including transportation issues at the university, at a local university. I'm not officially representing them. More importantly, I'm a family member and a citizen of Reno. And I want to speak from a very personal basis that three out of the four members of my family travel primarily in their day-to-day routines by micro mobility, including scooter and bicycling. A fourth one would, if only she could feel more comfortable traveling through the downtown area. This has been a huge benefit to my health and my, both mental and physical, since I've started doing this, you know, almost 100%. And I've been following this issue for a long time, and it means a great deal to me to have safer routes through the city. And I also echo the comments that I think if this is done right, this will be a real feather in the cap for downtown Reno's attractive attractiveness. I also want to make sure that we don't forget the safety issues involved with this. I'm, my brother was lost to traffic violence when we were children, and I always carry that with me. So I think about that when I think about ways we can make our streets safer for people. So I want to thank the engineers, the planners, and city staff, and the, the council members and mayor for taking this issue seriously and, and, and hopefully pushing this through today. I think it will be a big benefit, not only for the safety of the mobility folks, but also for motorists, vast majority of whom have no interest in hurting anyone or getting scratches on their vehicles. And a lot of the data that we look at in places that have made such improvements shows that these, that these enhancements also bring major safety benefits for motorists as well. And by taking some cars off the street, we provide an invisible benefit to motorists by reducing some congestion, because you can fit a lot more people on bikes. Last little piece I'll mention is I'm involved in an informal student and staff organization at my educational institution that advocates for safe routes through downtown and would very much like to see this. We know that we have many students who are nervous about traveling through downtown. And having this network enhancement will really help. And we have people who are very much cut off to businesses, to shopping and things like that, because they don't have a license or they don't have a car. And having safe routes will be a big benefit to them. So I see this as a win on many levels. And again, thank you very much for your consideration. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Professor.
Vice Mayor, we have no additional public comment, but for the record, I would like to state that we received 29 comments prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, October 10th. These have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available on the Reno.gov meeting portal. Two letters in favor, 24 letters in opposition, and three letters of concern, which do include voicemail transcriptions. And with that, we have no additional public comment, and I'll give it over to Carrie.
Okay, Ms. Kosky, welcome.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor and council members. Carrie Kosky, your Director of Public Works and City Engineer. Before I get started here today, I want to, I want to just mention that I don't do things single-handedly. I do things with a team. And there's a team sitting behind me that I want to just recognize all of the efforts that they have provided in the last couple of years. We have Dale Keller. He's Director of Engineering with RTC. We have Mr. Paul Nelson, Communications and Government Affairs with RTC. We have Katie Harrison. She's our Public Works Engineering Manager. We have Amy Pennington. She's our Special, Special Projects and Outreach Coordinator. Couple of people that could not be here today because they're, they're carrying on business is Khalil Wilson, the Assistant Director of Public Works, and Sarah Going of the RTC. She's a transportation engineer, and I wanted to say thank you to all of their support. So today, I am here, we are here, seeking your approval on the downtown micro mobility network of streets so that the RTC, the Regional Transportation Commission, can include these streets into their improvement plan for design and construction funding. So my presentation today, I'm going to outline some of the council priorities and actions that we, that have been taken in the past year and a half to two years, how, what it takes to grow the micro mobility network, what corridors we evaluated, our recommendation, funding for the recommendation and the implementation steps. So first off, I want to just comment on the council's commitment to micro mobility, and it's been extraordinary over the past two years. So the first picture up there at the top, it depicts Holcomb Avenue improvements, where we placed 100, or excuse me, we placed 1, 1.2 miles of buffered bike lanes that were added to connect Midtown to the Truckee River Path and to downtown, most recently. The project also realigned that dangerous skewed intersection that Mr. Barry O'Sullivan spoke about in, in public comment. And we also improved the pedestrian infrastructure. We are anxiously awaiting our new path sweeper. And I believe I've talked to our communications director. We want to have a naming contest for that. The micro mobility pilot study was completed by two miles of, of streets in downtown. You're familiar with the Virginia Street and the Fifth Street portions of that. Next one is nearly one quarter of a mile of new separated micro mobility path along Enterprise Drive, which is north of the university, connects student housing to the university. The next one is upgrades. We did some upgrades to the parking lot at the Reno Adaptive Cycling Center and, which is heavily supported by, I know the mayor and this council. This picture here depicts a portion of the Reno's piece of the Audi Wells project, approximately three miles of raised and separated micro mobility infrastructure connecting Sparks to Reno along Audi Wells is underway, and it's about halfway complete. I'm, I'm happy to announce too, to this council, that through your dedication of, of funding, we have, we have surface treated over 20 miles of bike lanes. This past summer, we've added the new thermoplastic bike symbols and the green contrast lanes. The Virginia Street placemaking study was, was, was completed and supported. And I'm happy to announce that we are in under design and implementation for Phase One. We, the council approved the, the receipt of some, of a grant fund for the Carson Truckee Water Conservancy District. And we were able to put some riprap along the Truckee River Path, which is an extremely important connector along the Truckee River. We, we also enhanced that by putting some, some curbing along there to further protect the path. The Bird Scooter franchise agreement was approved, and it's provided, as of this morning, we have over 581,000 miles the Bird scooters have racked up in Reno. 581,000 miles. That is 24 times around the earth. Let that sink in. There is a need for micro mobility. That's just Bird scooters. Last but not least, we, we used funds from the capital improvement program to surface treat about 1.8 miles of the Truckee River Path from Lake to Fisherman's Park. Very impressive. Thank you all for your support on this. So what does it take, excuse me, so, so, so what does it take to grow the downtown mobility network? Essentially, a sustainable micro mobility network balances trade-offs to serve different users across the network. We heard that from the public commenter. It balances the trade-offs to serve different users. So the group of users that were most interested, that are, that we're, we're, we're targeting, and we heard it over and over through public comment, is the one that I have kind of circled there, the 51 to 56%. Those are probably most of us in this room that feel most comfortable on a low-stress facility. So what does a low-stress facility mean? It's the space on the street where there is less traffic, lower speeds, and less conflicts with vehicles. So we learned a lot from all of the workshops and the training and the pilot study that we, that we put forth. We learned that low-stress facilities require more space. There just is simply not enough space to do everything we want. So there's trade-offs that are needed. We need to remove travel lanes. We need to remove parking lanes, or sometimes both. There are changes in maintenance needs that need to be considered. We need to consider how we sweep their streets, how we remove the snow, how we place surface treatments. There are, there are many things that we have to consider. So in our study, we evaluated seven corridors. And I just want to touch on what those seven corridors were. So from, from the left, from the, the map on the, on the slide here, from the left-hand side, Vine Street connects the northern neighborhoods all the way down to the Truckee River. connects the northern neighborhoods all the way down to the Truckee River. The next north-south is Virginia Street, connects the university to Midtown. University Way and Center Street connects university through Midtown. Well, I wouldn't say all the way through Midtown, but to the roundabout there at Mary Street. And then the last northwest, or the north-south corridor was Lake Street, Evans, and Sinclair. There, we connect the university to the bus station, the RTC bus station, to downtown, to Midtown. So expanding the network, what does it take to do that? And I'm really proud to let the council know that our team has provided a community-oriented engineering approach. And what that means is, we tested out the micro mobility infrastructure through the pilot study. We gathered feedback through that pilot study on the types of things that work and don't work. We gathered feedback from the users, from the bike community, from the scooters, from the vehicle folks, about what their preferences were. We held a lot of public meetings. We did surveys. We did virtual meetings. We've gathered an enormous amount of feedback from the users, the stakeholders, the activators. And what the activators are, the businesses, right? Nobody would, I mean, there'd be no reason to really come downtown if their businesses weren't here. So in those three fundamental areas, we looked at transportation, community engagement, and adjacent and property owner interests. So I want to talk a little bit about the transportation engineering part of this. We looked at the vehicles, we looked at the vehicle speeds, we looked at the vehicle volumes, we looked at the width of the right-of-ways, the number of conflicts, all of the things that you've heard from our speakers today that were concerns. We looked at driver visibility. We looked at the intent of the roadway and the expectations of the users. One of our commenters today talked about, you don't expect to see a bicycle going the wrong way, right? So we looked at all of that. We really looked to see what made sense. We also looked at, in the transportation evaluation, you've heard myself and Dale say this over and over, every bike plan needs a car plan. Where are our cars going? Where do we want people to come into the city and out of the city? We don't want people to be frustrated to be able to get to and from if they're in a vehicle. We also looked at the cost-benefit, and what yields the greatest cost-benefit for the community. There's a limited amount of funding, so we want to be responsible and respectful of the funding that we would have. Community and properties and businesses. So the community is the users of the space. We gathered input to determine, you know, what supports a safe, connected route. And the network survey that we just recently did, the purpose of that survey was to do just that, find out what routes did the users feel that were comfortable. The purpose of that survey was not for the users to rank which ones that we would go forward, because we're using the three elements to decide, make the final decision, transportation engineering, and business property owners. As far as the property owners, generally, as you heard today, they support the micro mobility in downtown. What they don't support is they don't support things that are going to affect their businesses, loss of parking, loss of vehicle lanes. Many had safety concerns as well. So that brings me to the seven corridors, and on this slide here, I show kind of an evaluation of where those seven corridors landed with the three areas that we looked at, engineering, business, and community. So there on the left-hand side, I list the corridors, list the limits of those corridors, approximate length, approximate project cost, and then if there's a check mark there, that was supported by engineering, supported by business, or supported by community. So the light blue are the four that we are moving forward today, Sinclair, Lake, Evans, Virginia Street, Vine Street, and Fifth Street. I want to talk a little bit about the corridors that were not selected to come forward. Sixth Street is supported by engineering and by the community, and the RTC has put forth a Safe Streets for All grant, so that particular corridor will come separately through an interlocal agreement if that grant goes forward. Third Street, Third Street has some issues with crossings. As Damian pointed out, it makes it very difficult when you're crossing high-volume streets on a vehicle, and it's not, if there's not a signal there. So we had some issues with that in the transportation engineering evaluation. Some of the businesses also had concerns because of the right-of-way width, it would mean that we would have to take away their parking. University and Center Street. Now, this one here gets a little bit more attention, so I decided to put together a slide and basically talked about where University Way and Center Street was not supported by transportation engineering or the property owners and businesses. First, transportation, high-speed vehicles. So as we've heard today over and over, we do have a lot of higher speeds. I believe the speed on Center Street, University Way, is 30 miles per hour. We have a lot of high-vehicle volumes. So in those cases, that does not provide us with a low-stress facility. Those are two big things we looked at. Conflicts with the high-volume cross streets. So we've got the universe, I mean, the freeway, I-80, we've got some major intersections up there. Travel lanes removed, we would have to remove the travel lanes. And our streets for cars to get in and out of Reno, or in and out of downtown are Center Street and University Way and Sierra Street. We have limited access during special events. So this last weekend, we had the Italian Festival, and you all probably, some of you may have attended and noticed that when we have the events downtown, we shut down Virginia Street. That means the traffic all goes to the other streets. And capacity is important. They don't have another option to go quickly in and out of downtown. Cost-benefit, it was the least beneficial due to the higher cost to construct. Property owners, I've already talked about that, the limited business support due to loss of parking and vehicle lanes. So that brings me to the four corridors that we were recommending to bring forward. Three corridors in the north-south direction, and one in the east-west direction. I've highlighted those on the slide here, Sinclair, Lake, and Evans, that's kind of in the brownish color. That one would connect the university and the RTC bus station all the way down to Midtown. Virginia Street was supported through our placemaking study, and that one goes, connects the university to Midtown. Vine Street is a very good connector, connecting the north communities, residential communities to the river. And then Fifth Street is connecting the Keystone area all the way over to Evans or the Brewery District. I want to talk a little bit about the costs here for these projects. So when we prepare estimates for the corridors, we look at safety for all. So we don't just, we're not looking at striping on the roads. We are looking at what makes the most sense. As Tom mentioned, is we have to be deliberate about all of the improvements, and a lot of times, that means we have to remove curbs, we have to remove gutters, we have to remove traffic signals, the lines that go to the traffic signals, so there is more cost involved. I often hear complaints from folks that say, well, Washington DC did 40 miles of micro mobility for $1 million. What's wrong? Why can't we do that? After we've kind of dug into that, yes, they have. They've done a lot of micro mobility with just striping. But we're also finding out that they're going back and they're spending more money to put more infrastructure in to make it safer. So they're using kind of like a, let's get it on the road, let's get it in, and then we'll come back and deal with it later. We are taking the approach that, no, let's do it right the first time. So that brings me to my favorite slide of this presentation, is what this micro mobility does for us. So this map here shows the connectivity. The blue lines are all of the streets that currently have some sort of micro mobility on them, like striped bike lanes or separated paths. The green line around is the Truckee River Path. If you see the, if you notice here in the connections that we have with these four corridors, Vine Street, I'm going to start on the left-hand. Vine Street has a very nice connection, a smooth connection, all the way down, from across the freeway all the way to the river. Those dotted lines, I forgot to mention that, those dotted lines, like the one off of West Forest Street, those are future projects, and we're going to be bringing those probably interlocal to this body for approval. We've got that one in place. And then the Dickerson Road, we'd put some money from CDBG, and we've started the design on that, and we're programming that into our next street rehab. I can't remember which year it was. Katie will, she can fill in the blank here for me on that one. And then up at the top of the page, we have East Ninth, that connector, we're working on a connection with Endot to provide a connection from the Wells Avenue project that I mentioned all the way over to Evans Street. So the pink streets are all of the new corridors that we're recommending here today, and they will provide us with some enhanced connection for our downtown micro mobility network. So if the body chooses to approve this today in our recommendation, we would ask that the RTC board put this on their agenda for, I believe that's next week, next Friday. If approved at that point, then we could go into the design and bidding process next year, work out the details. As a lot of people have mentioned, these are just, you know, these are our conceptuals, and they are. We are looking, we would have to finalize the design. And in the final design, you know, we would, the RTC would be the project manager, and they would provide the project funding. Construction would anticipated to start in 2025. Some of these projects, for example, like the Virginia Street project, may take a little bit longer. We're working on placemaking implementation. There's some things that we have to make sure that we coordinate. So that brings me to the end of my presentation, and I will turn it over, back over to you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Kosky. It's, first of all, incredible presentation. The depth of your work on this subject is not unnoticed. I think it's been, you know, a 10-year undertaking to get to this moment.
Lots of gray hair.
Well, you don't seem to have any, and then your attitude improves with age, while her mind gets worse. So I kudos to you in that regard. I guess ultimately what I want the public to take away from this engagement, depending on how the will of the body is, is that this map that you have highlighted here really shows the depth of commitment that your team has made to moving, you know, micro mobility and bike safety infrastructure forward. It's easy for elected leaders to take the credit for the work that staff does, and sometimes that is sort of the role, right? You do the work, we take the credit. But truly, in this case, while there has been a broad sense among this council over many years that we want to make improvements in this area, it really takes willing staff to commit to the time, in part because, and I don't think this is revealing too much, but of course, Ms. Kosky, you're responsible for a pool, a public safety center, a, you know, road improvements, fire station, micro mobility. I mean, there's a lot that occupies a day. But what I have noticed in the process of understanding more about this and learning about micro mobility really is that it really takes willing engineers who have a heart to listen. I think you and the RTC team have been really doing all the yeoman's work on it. I think when you and I traveled last year to Denver, or earlier this year to Denver, with the RTC team and saw some of the micro mobility improvements there, all of those ideas just continued to percolate. And again, I certainly am not out there measuring the sidewalks and looking at the traffic counts, and Ms. Pennington is, who's done laboring or on all the public communication outreach, but it gets us to this moment. And I also noticed that although Mr. Plasen is not here this afternoon, I hope he's listening and understands that this has also been something where we have wanted and sought out involvement of our biking community. Now, have there been perfect moments in that relationship? No, but I think they've improved, and certainly with your leadership, they have. Last night, I understand that you and the RTC team went to Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance Board Meeting and essentially perhaps gave this presentation to them. And oddly enough, earlier in the week, we had all measure of pitchforks out, ready to just come in and spear you with them. There were newspaper articles written, op-eds, there were Substacks making all measure of claims about your transparency or work. And at the end of the day, last night at, I think, 9:36, as I recall, I saw Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance post their support for this project. And of course, this is not unfamiliar territory. Oftentimes, bike advocates are pushing the envelope because they want a safer environment, and they deserve a safer environment. I would be remiss to say also, before I turn it over to my colleagues, Mayor Shivi has been absolutely at the forefront of this from the get-go. I'm sort of a newcomer to this world, but she has been the one who has really long-championed a lot of these bicycle improvements, and although she's not here today, I know she was so very happy to see Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance post last night. I know that she is thrilled with the work that you and your team and the RTC have done. Obviously, she and I will have some role at the RTC in how this is carried forward there. But at the end of the day, I just must tip my hat to you, your team, for the, you know, literally tens of years of work on this. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's come to the body. Let's see if anyone has any questions at this time. Oh, Ms. Breckins, I'm sorry.
Yeah, our request to speak tab is not working.
I know, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, and I will say, your clock, we have very rigid rules here for those who aren't here. I've objected to those rules over the years, but your clock didn't start ticking until you'd spoke for two minutes, so if I need more time, I hope the same equity would be provided to me. I want to say also that earlier today, I showed up on some other items, a statement that our city manager told to me about my memorialized hostility towards staff, which is not true, not accurate, and a front for improper government actions that are being investigated of him against me. But because that is out there, I want to preface my comments because I am not in support of what staff is bringing forward as a recommendation to us. I also, though, do want to acknowledge your first five minutes of presentation, which involved out-naming the staff member and the work they do. I started here as a staff member kind of early mid-career in 1998, having worked for other city managers, and the city manager would never allow people to call attention to themselves and the staff. But chain of command has changed, norms have changed. It's not a way that I, you know, brought up as staff to highlight staff and their individual tasks. It was always known that we were part of the organization, but I don't discount it. And so I want to bring that forward and just say, because maybe there's some sense she's hostile to staff because she doesn't sit there and thank everyone all the time individually for the work they do. But I always do acknowledge, and I've sat in that seat. But the kudos, you know, the other first five minutes to the council on all the great bike stuff they've done, I don't agree with that either. I think we've been deficient. I came on in 2012, and 2014, we did a pedestrian safety report. We really looked at the numbers. We knew we had a problem. We have more of a problem now because this body has not focused on safety. So I don't think it's great stuff we've done. I think it's catch-up. I think this is catch-up, and I do have some issues with it. I'm sensitive to the parking lot dynamics along the University Way, Center Street Way. But look, there are parking garages imposed in 18th century urban frameworks in this country, Boston, New York, other places, 19th century ones. century ones. They work, everyone knows. You're just crawling at a small pace coming out of the parking garages. Um, the problem is when you come in, like I saw on that one side, um, we've got high-speed streets. It's a real engineering approach we're taking to this, in my view, and I'm a city planner who looks at the land use and the hospitality of the whole area for human scale, safety, is you want to get rid of those high-speed veh- vehicle routes. You don't want to treat your downtown as a thoroughfare. And we continue to operate on that mindset. And that's why the longest network, which is University, one point five miles, that brings in the most connectivity is discounted. And I think it's wrongly discounted. If you look at what we've done in the one ways up north in um, the other side of the university with Sierra and Virginia Street, Sierra Street in particular, we've made those more conducive to being speeding routes. And we continue to have this mindset that we're gonna have a downtown that is a corridor of, you know, high speeds, thirty miles per hour, whatever. No, we want to have a downtown with slow traffic. There's a body of evidence that didn't seem to have made it in about how that does for business. I mean, you can't go along some of these quarters and say, business is great right now with these roads. But you can point to a lot of other evidence that says when you make these human scale res- investments, you get more business opportunity. You transform the area. This downtown is failing in so many ways. It is worse than it was in twenty twelve when I came in and we laid off a third of our workforce with graffiti and no police patrols practically. It is worse and less safe than, and it's time to take jumps. And the best jump that's been on the, on the queue has been humanizing that one way to not make downtown a drive-through area. And as long as we can have that engineering-directed mode, we're not gonna get there. I want to ask one question in my time on traffic counts that I, I I feel so um, committed in the urban design principles that I bring forward on this that, you know, I'm not even gonna ar- argue it because none were presented. It's really an engineering. But so the one engineering um, concept I want to bring forward, because I am sensitive to the, to the uh, loading of the streets, is what is, what is University Way carrying from Liberty to the freeway? ADT? And has any, fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand.
And has anyone ever delineated how many of those are garage services, are stop trips, linked trips? Because they are linked trips. You're not going back the other way, right? So has anyone done any analysis? So you got fourteen thousand trips. Let's count up all the parking spaces and say there's three thousand, okay? Three thousand and maybe some of those get not used one day, some do, you know. So you got nine thousand trips that you're creating downtown to just be a thoroughfare. It's not the way downtowns need to operate, particularly a small one. If they were further abret, further aligned, they would work. Um, but you know, this engineering mindset of thirty miles per hour, nine thousand trips, of people just going through, maybe three thousand will use the parking garage, is why our downtown is failing, among a few other reasons. In my, you know, experience as a, someone who's worked in city planning for thirty years.
Thank you, Ms. Breakfast.
But could I, okay, and then I'll get to Vine Street.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Ms. Breakfast. I'm gonna come back to the dais. Ms. Ebert, did you have some comments?
Yes, I did. Um, so thank you for this presentation. Thank you, everyone, for your work on this. Um, I just had some questions about um, engagement on this.
Yes.
So um, in the staff report, it says that um, public feedback, virtual and in-person events, it says five. So is that total public?
Correct, the total number.
Okay, so were those like in City Hall or?
They were in various, various locations. Some were in City Hall, some were in other locations.
Okay, so we did have public in-
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
And then uh, the next line on the staff report, it says bicycle community and stakeholder meetings. Who, who do you consider a stakeholder outside of the bicycle community?
So in stakeholders could also be um, the university. It could be um, the RTC. It could be other agencies. Um, those are, those are, those are our stakeholders.
Businesses, I was just gonna ask.
The businesses are, yeah, businesses are stakeholders.
Okay, okay. Um, and then um, public surveys, placemaking, pilot and multi- uh, micro mobility network. Um, it says four, and then we have in parentheses here, um, four thousand five hundred. What is, what is that number?
So I'm sorry, that that number is the total number of surveys that were, were received. And and this, the smaller number is that the number of surveys that went out.
Okay, so.
So there was a total of forty-five hundred surveys received, whether that be through placemaking, through the pilot study, through the network study that we just did.
Okay, so we had forty-five hundred responses.
Yes.
So we had a lot of community engagement. So it's not that we didn't have any feedback or engagement. We had a lot
Correct.
of response. Okay.
We did.
So that's good. I just wanted to call that out, that this isn't something that the city just did on their own. We had a lot of um, opportunity, a lot of meetings and a lot of feedback from the community when we were planning this.
That's, that's the community-oriented engineering
Yeah.
process that I was talking about.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight those specific numbers
Thank you.
because that is a lot of feedback.
Thank you.
Um, and um, next line, uh, it says City of Reno Public Works Property Business Owner Meetings, twenty-six. That's also a lot of meetings. Were those individual meetings with businesses or were those meetings that all the businesses were invited to or or what did that look like?
That was individual business meetings. So we actually went door-to-door or made appointments with the businesses that were along the corridors and um, and set up appointment to talk to each, to talk to those. Now, there was, there was more than twenty-six, but at the time I wrote the staff report, that was the accurate number that I'd had.
That's great.
So it's well over thirty since then, yeah.
A lot of opportunity there as well. Okay, and then um, community boards, NAB, R, AAC, CMAC presentations, notifications to all NABs for public engagement. Did you do um, presentations at NABs or was it just notification to NABs?
Many times it was just a um, notification at the NAB.
Okay, that there was a survey or something like that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right. So I, that's it for right now. I just wanted to, you know, highlight how much, you know, the city did reach out for feedback uh, on on these tracks. I'll, I will have other stuff later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ebert. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I don't necessarily have any comments, but I do, or questions, but I do have a couple of comments. Um, the first one is, I love to see the collaboration of governments working together and agencies working together. And I don't think that was always the case in this space. Um, so thank you very much RTC and City of Reno for coming together and working and developing solutions that our community can be proud of. Um, I did want to echo my councilwoman Ebert's um, comments about the outreach, uh, based on the public comment that we had earlier. I think that statement was inaccurate. There was a ton of public outreach. Um, I saw and attended several things. You were out together, RTC, City of Reno, um, working hand in hand. I know Amy and her team were out working with businesses. And I'm just really happy that we got to this point. Um, and this is something we should all be proud of. And um, you recognizing your staff and the team, really appreciate that too. So thank you very much for working on this. I know it's been a long project. Um, I know we have a little ways to go, so um, appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to our colleagues on Zoom. Uh, Councilmember Dewar.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, I think this is a watershed moment in that um, I can only imagine how you're feeling right now, Carrie, um, having carried the ball, you and your team, for so long, because I know how personally invested you are in expanding mobility options, you know, whether that's adaptive or dealing with people that um, have lesser mobility or need uh, you know, or handicapped in some way in terms of needing wheelchair, um, people that walk and people that drive. And here we have the micro mobility um, component. And I think your goal today is to ensure that these streets are included in the RTC
Yes.
uh, improvement plan, the RTIP.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And all of this work to get to that point and why? Because um, RTC has to be our major partner. I mean, this is a very big undertaking and they're the ones who have taken the lead on these kind of projects, especially as it relates to uh, buses, but more recently walking, pedestrian crossing, safety in streets. So I love the partnership. Um, and I've also been engaged in this for a very long time. I was here when we were working on Midtown and the huge discussion about whether Midtown should be a narrower street, wider street, have parking, not parking, have bike lanes. And the decision at that time was to focus the uh, bicycle activities anyway on the adjacent streets and leave Virginia for mostly actually pedestrian, because we ended up making very wide sidewalks. And then just reducing it to two lanes for tr- for travel, car travel, truck travel. So um, that was a huge compromise process. Um, what I've seen here is very similar. And I just want to congratulate you and the team for where we are today. Um, I also um, though, want to thank you for the tour that you did with us, uh, with us and RTC staff driving us on every single one of these streets, so that we could see firsthand uh, loading issues, parking issues, pedestrian activity issues, um, access to businesses, all of it. You get a much more cohesive understanding. And I think quite a few of council members got a chance to one by one or two by two um, get that experience. And I found that invaluable. And I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to do it because it really made a difference for me. I could understand when you say that this, the um, transportation network has to work for everyone. We, we have to include cars, you know, we don't have to discourage cars. Um, in other words, exclude cars. We have to include them. But we also have to get them to move over and make room for all the other uh, modes of transportation. And I can't say enough about the um, the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance work in the space. I mean, they have been at every meeting. They have engaged. They have been advocates as they are supposed to. They ride and they experience a street firsthand. So I'm very grateful for their participation. I'm very, I don't know what happened last night, but clearly something happened. A communication was enhanced. There was a turnaround. People understood that what we really need to do is get this into the RTC planning network with not having every detailed design, but at least a, a basic framework. And I really appreciate the framework you've come up with and I'm looking forward to supporting it. So I just, I wanna, I don't have a lot of questions because I've spent a lot of time reading the reports, reading the letters that have been sent in, reading the documents and articles, opinion columns, um, and then also talking with you and your team to where I feel like I have a pretty comprehensive understanding. And I think at this point, we are moving in the right direction. So thank you to the entire team. That includes our uh, public that have participated, our public, our businesses, and our nonprofits that have participated in this. We could not have got there without them. So thanks for the opportunity to make a few comments.
Councilmember Dewar, thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Um, on my part, I also want to thank you, Carrie, for uh, and RTC for giving us those personal tours. It definitely allowed me um, to see the need and um, to experience that firsthand and be able to see some of the, the things that you have pointed out, not just in this presentation, but in previous conversations we've already had. And so I want to also highlight uh, the collaborative work and how w- we as a municipality can work collaboratively with our partners to make sure that we increase the safety for anybody wanting to bike, ride a bird scooter or walk, uh, or drive through our city and making sure that people feel safe, depending on their mode of transportation. And so I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. And I appreciate you, Carrie, for taking the, all of your time and effort and knowledge and applying it to this specific case. So thank you again. And I look forward to supporting this network suggestion.
Councilmember Martinez, thank you so much. Ms. Kosky, um, one of the things that I thought was uh, important in this discussion was uh, a ti- a moment where we brought last year, along with a couple of our partner agencies and friends, the Dutch Cycling Embassy to Reno. And one of the things that stood out in that conversation continues to resonate with me today, which is the idea that um, you know, well, I think they picked Amsterdam because they were, you know, from that part of the world. And and Amsterdam was being held up as this great bicycle-friendly community. And they said, look, Reno is not going to be Amsterdam. And Reno is certainly not going to become Amsterdam overnight.
Correct.
It may take a twenty or thirty-year undertaking to get to that place where we want to. And ultimately, I think that is telling. Um, you know, you showed the slide that had each of the different things that have been worked upon. And I know that for you, it's more than a picture and a star on a thing. It was a project. It was a person. It was a group of people. Uh, one of them involves someone who's no longer with us, David Pritchett, who was really uh, an important part of the Holcomb Sinclair project. And so where it, where some see a failure or a lack of due speed, I see an effort on your team's part to make small and market improvements. And you know, isn't that oftentimes what happens in government? It's the drip, drip, drop that creates the full bucket of opportunity. So I really want to thank you again and really go back to that thing which was said to us, which was, you know, commit to the principles and ideas that the Dutch Cycling Embassy folks shared with us and really it's started to percolate into our work. Certainly it was there before them, but it was heightened by it. RTC is doing a great job of um, being responsive to the board members who are a new configuration over there. And and ultimately, um, while no one is going to say anything that government does is perfect, uh, we're working in the right direction, I think, as Councilmember Dewar rightly noted. Uh, and that is really the thing, keep on cycling, you know. And so thank you again for that. Uh, like Ms. Dewar, I have uh, read all of the reports. I have been at the meetings. I have worked with your team. And so I have a high degree of confidence in it. But more importantly, I want the public to have a high degree of confidence in what we've done.
Yes.
And part of the thing that uh, tells me that that's true is kind of the messaging that's happened over the last twenty-four hours where, um, and and by the way, that meeting was supposed to have been a few weeks earlier.
Yes.
Um, and and certainly sometimes people's schedules get uh, off and and we have to bob and weave. But thank you to you and and all the folks who attended last night. I saw uh, Mr. Keller was there, Ms. Pennington. I I don't know who else was there. I think Ms. Venus was there even from the city's comms team.
Yes.
Because we want to get it right. And I think you have gotten it right. And I think the depth of the public engagement and and these uh, moments that you've heard from the other council colleagues are, are in support. So again, I think Ms. Dewar also hit it on the head when she said, I can't imagine what you're feeling. Because um, as legacy projects go, I know that you'll look back on many of these and, and see the impact that you've had on this community, Ms. Kosky. So thank you for that. Let's see you. I think Ms. Ebert, you had some additional comments.
Yeah. So I also appreciated my, my tour to see the different, you know, potential routes and, you know, the the pluses and minuses for the, the different areas. Um, and I just had a, a quick question. Um, and this is something you kind of informed me about during the tour, but what was the genesis of this? Like what, what kicked this off? What was the trigger for Reno to say, hey, we're gonna have micro mobility lanes?
What triggered the micro mobility lanes? I think the, after COVID, what triggered it was, was COVID. We realized that um, transportation was changing. People needed other modes. They were using other modes. They needed safer places to use those modes. And um, uh, if the mayor had reached out to me, I'd gotten several pictures from you all, from other um, conferences, conferences or or places you had been and basically saying, why aren't we doing this, Carrie? What, what's going on? And um, that's when we undertook the pilot. And and that was, that was the, the, the whole reason why we decided to do the pilot, because we didn't, we didn't know exactly what we needed, but we knew there was a need.
Yeah.
So that's where we started.
Yeah, so this wasn't because the community said, hey, we're lacking in bike lanes. This was a decision made by council that they saw that there was maybe a deficiency here and
The council was a big part of that, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So um, was there any concerns over uh, collisions or pedestrian safety or anything like that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Was that also a trigger for this?
Also, absolutely. Councilwoman Breakfast brought that up. Is, safety is always first and foremost for our transportation engineers. We're always looking for ways to make things, streets safer. And um, as Tom pointed out, that um, we need to do a better job of making sure that it's the safety, that, you know, the safety infrastructure we put in for uh, micro modes also create safety for, for vehicles, right? Because then the vehicles know where they're at. They know what to expect. And i- it's been proven that it's, it's much safer for vehicles as well.
Okay, great. So thank you for that. I just want to, you know, a little bit of history there as to, you know, how we got here in the first place. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think for my part too, Ms. Ebert, um, what has happened, I think, and Carrie, I think is absolutely correct, that as we have gone out to conferences to educate ourselves, we often come back saying, well, look at what Boise is doing, or look at, look at what this city is doing. And a number of those continue to be bike improvements. And so if other cities are doing great things with their bike infrastructure and we're not, it feels like we're kind of not innovating. And so I think there was a lot of that. But I will say that, you know, if I provided you a picture, you provided the last ninety yards of of runway. if I provided you a picture, you provided the last 90 yards of runway for it, right? It wasn't, I don't know what a picture tells you to do or informs you to do, but you've always been willing to go out and figure it out. And so again, I know the mayor could not be here right now. She's traveling right now as well. But it really has been her desire to improve the safety of our streets for all users. It's also an effort of our sustainability program, right? It reduces the carbon footprint when people are able to ride their bicycles rather than, you know, in a car that is not as great for our environment. So it's a bunch of things, right? And no, no one of them was the ultimate catalyst, I don't believe. But certainly, I think there were moments that started to crystallize it. But it takes a person like yourself to really focus the, you know, the interests that we have, which can be passing and waning and wax as, you know, travel happens. But really, it's, your team deserves a lot of the credit.
A higher point for me was when the federal delegation came and I got to, we had the pilot program set up, and we got to take the federal delegation around and make a pitch for grant funding. And Dale was there right alongside me and Bill Thomas. And we, we made a great pitch. And I think they, they were, we are on their radar. We just have to go about it the right way. And I believe we are by our community-oriented engineering process that we're using. I believe that we will be successful. I'm not sure when. But what's happening around the United States is it's nuclear when it comes to the amount of efforts that are being put into micro mobility and the expectations.
Yeah. I also just want to say, I'm really happy to see all of the meetings you had specifically with business owners, because that was something I was really concerned about with putting these in downtown and the impact for parking with local businesses. So I'm really happy to see that there's so much one-on-one outreach that's been done with these businesses downtown. So just wanted to, again, thank you for everything and just, you know, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments, Ms. Breckus?
Vice Mayor?
Oh, hold on a second, Ms. Dewar. I'll come back to you. Ms. Breckus is up next.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, the Center Track concept was pre-pandemic. And that's why so many people felt there was a bait and switch, because council gave direction and went into design, and then it got bait and switched. And I still think it is problematic. Look, I've been on my bike five of the last seven days. This is the time of year I ride a lot. And I'm getting more nervous. But it's not, and Vine Street, which is, you know, one of the projects, we're heralding it, is a very safe street. Maybe with just some no-cost timing, because we haven't even talked about signal timing, it could be made better. But in my view, it's a waste of money. You go to the harder ones, and the harder ones aren't highlighted on here. And these are the speed traps, the speed, or the, the speed streets of Center Street, which we said we were going to do, also known as University Way, and Sierra. It's too bad that Driving Tour did not take council members walking along those corridors both ways, because you would see that it is not human scale. It is not conducive to leisure businesses opening up there, because no one wants to have a business and attend to businesses on a street that has screaming 10,000 trips going by you at 30 miles per hour. There was not a lot of business community to be there, because there's not a lot of business community forming on those streets. And that's where I think our larger interest should come into play. The other point is, it doesn't matter if it's a fatality of a pedestrian or a bicyclist, and everyone is advantaged when you make these improvements. Sometimes bicyclists lease a ball. It's more the pedestrians who are advantaged by enjoying a less street-oriented environment, a less speeding environment, a more human-scale environment. But it doesn't matter if it's Kitzke where a pedestrian's crossing, or Second and Ralston where pedestrians crossing. And we know that people were killed on those streets this week, or in the last couple of weeks, if I have my ones right. You create a network of queues to drivers. And the queues to drivers in downtown Reno are speed, speed for the cars. And if you don't tame those two high-volume, high-speed corridors, which are really on either side of your heartbeat arterial, Virginia Street, you're not going to get a successful downtown. And that is why this is amiss. It's why I'm not supporting, why I'm not clapping myself on the back as being a part of a body that is taking this seriously. And my last point on this is, those birds, you know, there's a lot of things coming clear from the pandemic. We're just getting the distance from it. And one of those is that there are some very hostile, aggressive driving behaviors going out there in the world. You know, and some of the problem in strapped places like us is enforcement. But engineering is a big part of that. We're taking a miss on taming some really hostile streets. But it's also personal household incomes. If I may have 10 more minutes, 10 more seconds. A lot of those bird drivers and other people relying upon their own devices now, scooters and so on, are being increasingly priced out of the car industry. You are starting to see literature about how expensive cars have become, even used ones, and how many people need to go into these other modes, particularly in a sprawling environment like us without a transworking, functioning, high-level transit system. We need these all over downtown. We need to reduce conflicts. And the most important ones are the high-speed, one-way directional, 10,000 trips a day. This is a big miss to not tame those streets for human-scale downtown and safer downtown, in my view.
Thank you, Ms. Breckus. Ms. Dewar?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to just reflect a moment in this conversation. I recently had an opportunity to spend a bit of time in Philadelphia, you know, very developed, old city, where it was developed very incrementally, like many cities are, not some huge master plan. Even Washington DC had a big master plan, but Philadelphia developed more incrementally. And what I noticed about there, I'll just use Bike Network in this case, was that it was there, but it was very different on different streets. It wasn't like there was a uniform approach to it. Some places had bollards or dividers. Some places just had green paint. Some places did not. It was a share of the road, very narrow street. So it was a share of the road perspective like we have some places as well. And I guess what I learned from that, two things. One, is that there is no perfect, and that we're trying to retrofit, in our case, not a city that's hundreds of years old, but 100 years old, or 120 or so. We had our 150th. But, you know, there's, there's no like perfect, and we got a do-over, and we get to come in, make cyclotrons, and make everything just like we would in a more perfect environment if we were starting with a clean canvas. And so I just wanted to say that I, my expectation is that when we do get this product from RTC and ourselves, that it's going to be some of all. It'll be some protected lanes, some share lanes, some green paint. Really depends on what type of street it is, how wide it is. I think the goal to have bikes on every street may be unrealistic, but focusing on some major travel patterns may be very realistic. I also wanted to say another thing I noticed about Philadelphia. And that was its access to areas outside Philadelphia. If you're in Philadelphia, it's pretty hard to get to the airport, which is very close, but there's no, no quick way to do that. Or let's say, north or west, you basically have to go through a network of a whole bunch of streets. And I think we actually have a pretty good world where we have some, if not faster streets, at least streets that you could drive 25 or 30 miles an hour on versus 10, versus being in a constant traffic jam, which is really stressful for people that are living in cities. I saw a tremendous amount of walking. And when I was in Philadelphia, I walked almost everywhere. I didn't bike. I did not take trains. I mostly walked. But they had things within walking distance. That's the nature of this urban environment that it is. It's a much bigger, much more developed kind of place. They still have lots of townhomes. Everything is in big apartment complexes, many, many walk-ups, townhomes, condos, multi-story, you know, homes, and lots and lots and lots of walking. And there are many parks, small parks. We don't have those kind of small parks. I've noted that City Center, that's what I call it across from Bowling Stadium, is the only park in Reno that in the downtown area that has a tree, for example. But in Philadelphia, there are many small parks where streets came together, where there were trees, benches, and maybe a fountain, places that people could hang out, sit, observe, think. So what I wanted to say is there's no perfect. I had a chance to see a place we have never really talked about. We've talked about Columbus and other places we've visited. But it provided a different model. And one thing it could benefit from were some, let's say, protected ways to get out of the city, maybe go to New Jersey to a beach, go to the airport, go to New York. It's a, it's a pretty long way, 10 or 20 blocks to get out of center city. And that's part of its charm, but it's also part of its challenge. So anyway, I think we are hitting a very good balance. And that's what I really wanted to leave us with, is that we are working with what we are, Reno, Nevada, what we have, how our city has developed, the materials we have. And one of the things that they are doing, I will say, in Philadelphia is covering an entire street with an elevated park. And you see those more in cities these days. Construction's about to begin. So there's lots and lots of things in our future in terms of urban design. But I certainly think we're making some huge steps here. And I just, again, want to say there's no perfect. And the last thing I want to say is, thank you, thank you to the Trucking Meadows Bicycle Alliance for coming to a point that you could actually support the staff recommendation here today. It means a tremendous amount to me. Thank you.
Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'll be very quick. I think it's important here that we talk about truths and we're accurate, especially as leaders in the community. And as a leader or representative of downtown, I think it's important when we hear things that aren't true to talk what is true. It is not true that downtown is less, is more unsafe. It is actually, it is more safe today than it was before. And those, that's what the data shows. So downtown is not, not safe. And to say that, I think, is absolutely inaccurate. Also, and it's because of the work that we do here and all of the work that you're doing. The other thing that I heard that was not true is, we did walk the corridor, you and your team, all of you went out, and we did walk it. So that was one thing, we did get out of the car. So I appreciate that. And I just wanted, again, I wanted to say thank you. And I think we need to be accurate in what we say from up here. So appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Dewar, I'm going to come to you for a motion.
All right. Well, thank you for that honor. I would like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation and item D3, and forward this downtown micro mobility network of streets, Group One, to the, to request that the Regional Transportation Commission include these streets in their RTIP or Regional Transportation Improvement Plan.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Dewar, a second by Ms. Taylor. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I'm not going to support because I think, one, University Way, Center Way is the one that we embarked upon several years ago, before COVID. We got pretty far on it. It was a transparent, open process, and the rug got pulled out on it. And I think that was problematic. I think there was support for it. I think there was technical feasibility to it. And when I look at it today on the map, it's the longest connection. It's the most direct connection. And it's the toughest road for people to participate on in downtown. It doesn't matter who you are, a driver, a cyclist, or a, someone walking, crossing over from our Amtrak station, for example. And I think that's the one we need to focus on, to make downtown what it really was built as, which was human scale for walking, and not an arterial corridor for people getting on the freeway. And as long as we continue to treat it that way, I think we're not going to see what we want to see in downtown. There's other routes of corridors and access to the interstate than through downtown. So I won't support this because we're not focusing on University Center Way as we had embarked upon several years ago. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments from the body? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Motion carry.
Yeah, Carrie, these are generational changes.
I think so too. Thank you so much to your team.
All right, Vice Mayor, if you're okay with it, I'd like to go back to B12, because we do have some members here with us.
Yes, our esteemed Judge Curtis Hazlestein is with us and staff from the municipal court.
So we're on item B12, and this was pulled by Councilmember Breckus and Councilmember Ebert.
Okay. Not to worry, karma box folks, we're getting there.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Reese, council members.
Ms. Lopez, welcome. Always a privilege.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Jackie. I want to thank you for continuing our matter to this afternoon to accommodate Judge Hazlestein's stocket. We appreciate your time. For the record, my name is Veronica Lopez. I'm the Reno Municipal Court Administrator. I'm here before you today, seeking a resolution addressing the judge's salary increase. Historically, salaries for the bench have been established by the city council and adjusted from time to time, based on occasional ad hoc requests by the court administrator. As a result, these adjustments were infrequent, unpredictable, without any guiding principles. This chart shows the rate increases through the years. The mayor and council results were almost identical, which is why you can't see the line for the mayor for most of the chart. The judges fall behind in comparison to the elected and employee salary increases. The court administrator requests the bench's salaries to be fixed at 10% above the top of the salary range for the court administrator. This would allow for the bench's salary adjustments to be contemporaneous and commensurate with salary adjustments with other city employees as they are reviewed by council. The increased cost to the municipal court salary budget is by $165,407 for fiscal year 2324. This cost is covered by projected savings from a vacant position and grant funds. I move to approve the resolution placing the annual salary for the bench at 10% above the top of the salary range for the court administrator retroactively to July 1, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Lopez. This item was pulled by two of my colleagues. I'll start maybe with Ms. Ebert, who pulled the item.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So the total increase in budget would be $165,000, you know, roughly $165,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that would be across the four judges?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So and since we're already into the fiscal year, what would be, do you know what the total amount would be for a full fiscal year?
The total amount.
Oh, the total, that's, that's it?
That is the total amount for the four salaries.
Okay. Okay, that was, that was it for me.
Okay, Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Lopez, you said that the council, the history of the, the bench's salary has been ad hoc and at request to the court administrator?
That's right.
Have you been with the court a long time?
I've been with the court 18 years.
Okay, because I recall from other budgets, and I've been here on the council, this is my 11th year, that really the finance directors would, you know, actually look out for the court, not require it at that, and say, We're taking other people by this amount. We will take the court up by this amount. So I recall that it hasn't been, I mean, I do remember one time Judge Draculich came and asked for a raise. But other times, we kind of took them into account, and we were fair with them, and put them in par with resolutions with what we were doing with other people. But that was my recollection and understanding. But you're saying that it's the view of the bench that they have to more or less ask for it through the budget process?
That is the, that is the findings that I found throughout the research over the history of the salaries bench that I've been, that I've just recently conducted, is that it just, it depended. Sometimes it was a bench. Sometimes it was a bench, sometimes it was by resolutions submitted by the H R director. Uh, some, the last few resolutions that were submitted were, I don't know who submitted those and by who, at what request. So it's just been a myriad of variety of ways that the bench has received increases.
Yeah, and I, I just, you know, I, I feel like it has been working, it has been fair. You know, there were salary reductions all across the organization when we came out of the Great Recession. And um, you know, the charter does say that we set by resolution. And I've objected over the years of the autopilot nature of the council one. I think we gave the privilege of setting our, setting our salary and we owe the Reno residents a discussion on that at some point. I tried very hard my early years to have that discussion and was never able to move it forward. Now we're going to autopilot you all. And I, I have a problem with that, and I'll tell you why. It's tied to your salary. But how is your salary set or reclassified?
Well, the judges don't manage my salary bands. My salary band is in this category of the other department heads within the city of Reno, which is set by a resolution by city council.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't. The ma, this manager has upgraded and advanced positions outside of council actions. And we had some cleanup on that recently, to my understanding. So I think there is a way to reclassify your position without council approval. It could be by putting you on a par of the police chiefs and the fire chief because we have different bands of the department heads. It could be putting you up in an assistant city manager position. And those sort of things have happened. I don't think they're right or within the scope of the city manager, but they have happened in recent um, time. I have a few other questions and
I'll come back to you, Ms. Breckus. And Ms. Ebert had an additional question.
Councilmember Breckus kind of touched on what I was going to ask. Um, since salaries, judge salaries would be linked to the admin staff salary going forward if this passes. If we could just get, you know, a brief overview of how the admin salaries are set. So if, if the judges are going to be tied to that, then they're, you know, what are the admin salaries? How are they adjusted?
Thank you, Jesse.
Uh, Jesse Pugh with Human Resources. So the admin staff, uh, there's two levels essentially for court employees. The lower level admin staff are done as part of the unrepresented resolutions that are brought to council. And the court administrator salary is brought forward as part of that management resolution that's brought to council.
Okay, so that's something council votes on?
Correct.
And how often do we vote on that?
Typically, once a year.
Okay, so there's not like a set ordinance or anything like that? It's?
No, it's um, I mean, we bring it forward typically after the bargaining groups have settled and we've approved those agreements through council. And then we'll bring forward the unrepresented individuals um, shortly after that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, before you go, Ms. Breckus, I'm going to sort of say a few comments. Um, first of all, uh, Ms. Lopez, thank you for the presentation. Uh, it's not easy to have to come and ask for increases, and I appreciate the hard work that you all are doing. Uh, municipal court is one of the courts that really is closest to our citizens, right? There, it's the place where we have community court, which meets in our downtown Reno library. It's got a number of our specialized courts that are dealing with folks who are going through drug and alcohol addiction and recovery. It's got Veterans Camo Court, one of the most um, enjoyable things to attend is a camo uh, court graduation. Uh, and all of our judges deserve a great deal of our thanks for um, fairly and thoughtfully administering justice in this community. It's a very difficult thing too, because um, conceptually, you know, we have to contemplate the separation of powers doctrine, which is more esoteric than any of us probably want to get into today. But we are a body that has some role, historical and charter driven as to how we interact with and oversee a, a separate but co-equal branch of government. And that is a curious thing and often, I think, points to some of the conflicts that exist in this process. You know, we are supposed to have, you know, a, a city attorney's office who uh, is the sort of executive function, which is an elected position and, but of course, their budget is tied to what we do here. Similarly, we have a judiciary which is elected in their own right. And we fund through our general fund and we have a role in their budget. And then we have our work that we do, which is uh, in that more legislative. So we have this strange quasi overlap between the way in which our legislative priorities may not always align with the judge's judicial role. And so in, in my mind, I see this as really uh, twofold. One is it's an issue of equity. I think our judges deserve to be paid fairly and compensated uh, on a, a salary scale that um, allows them to understand what the salary is and the adjustments happen as they adjust. And then the second is it's really a budgetary concern. I suppose at any time the city council could in its purview you know, create a budget that would not fund the necessary work that is being done over there. I don't think that would happen. But because of the way that we have that, I think that there are some limitations in the charter and certainly there have been a number of judicial opinions in this state which speak to that as well. And so for my role, I think you've charted a good path. I, I'm supportive of the effort that you're here in front of us on today and think that this is the right thing to do for our judges and to provide certainty both to our judicial colleagues today, but also people who might be interested in becoming judges at the, in the future. I mean, uh, I think if I am not mistaken, we are the lowest paid judges. If we're not, we're quite close to that. And so um, ultimately, uh, I think it's a good thing. I also note that you've got salary savings in the current budget for 2324 that cover the increase that you're asking for. It's more important that when we come back and have our budget workshops next year and each department goes budget by budget and we do it through each one, you all are going to have to be here to really advocate for your needs of your department, whether that's administrative staff, whether that's um, the folks who are in the unrepresented group as Mr. Puit points out, or your court um, folks. Because although it's one time money that funds itself with salary savings in this year, it adds to it next year, right? And so ultimately, those will be ti, a, a moment for us to reflect too on that. Um, but um, good on you for making the effort and working through this process. I, I hope my colleagues will support the endeavor.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go now. Ms. Breckus, this is round two.
Yeah, I mean, the, the issue really is that it doesn't necessarily that follow that the administrator is going to pattern with those adopted by the resolution. Because this city manager, this city manager has reclassified positions outside of council action, outside of council budget, and then come back at augmentations or come back um, through the cleanup that we did and adjust those. Example is, I think we had a chief of staff position that became an assistant city manager position. We had um, a policy um, uh, direct, person who became a director. So we've seen a lot of creepage up in the organization, uh, people being reclassified up. And my concern is that the public is going to lose the transparency of seeing your position get reclassified up over the years and the judges go with it. And it's more, it's not the hands-on focus in the charter that I have seen. Um, so I have a problem with that. I have a problem with the autopiloting of any position. We don't, we bargain for everything. We take it through deliberation in the mix of the budget. But also, when I had my briefing, Ms. Bryan said, well, the judges can just set their salary anyway. And I, I didn't understand that. I asked Mr. Thornley about that in a follow-up. And while it does say, and Judge uh, Hazlitt Stevens corrected me and said, it says in the charter, we set it by resolution. There may be some case law that the judges can just, you know, really have that much leeway with the budget once it's passed on to them. If that's the case, go do your own budget, go do your own salaries, judges. You do great work and add value. That was mentioned, I acknowledge that. But you also are closest to the citizens, but also accountable to the citizens. So, you know, with that responsibility, if legally, you know, we have a problem with the charter and you all have the authority to check, set your own salaries, have at it. I either, from the seat that I have, want to set it in a way that I know each year, people will know how it's coming out on the budget. Or acknowledge that you're going to be doing it and taking on that responsibility if you have that legal authority, which two people who advise me say they, say you do. So this middle ground, which is rather hands-off, might be nice and kind of out of sight to everyone, but it's, it's not without risk of I think, backdoor reclassification and then corresponding salary adjustments to the bench. So I'm not supporting this approach. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions at this time? Ms. Ebert?
Uh, I do have a question. If it is true that the judges can't adjust their salaries by ordinance, why aren't they adjusting them to be 10% above the out admin salaries currently?
I'm going to defer to Judge Hazel Stevens to answer your question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Councilwoman Ebert. It's an interesting and intriguing and hairy issue with regard to the independence of the judiciary versus the independence of the legislative branch, the, this body, the independence of the city attorney's office. These are issues involved in the separation of powers, the independence of the judiciary by virtue of being part of the judiciary. But I don't want to, we're not here asking for that. We're not here to challenge the city charter at this point, saying we don't believe that the city council is the proper body to set our salary. That's not what we're here for. The city charter says that the salaries of the bench are to be fixed by resolution of the city council, period. We're abiding by that city charter and that's what we have to abide by. And we're here asking for the resolution. You know, I think there are arguments that could be made with regard to the separation of powers arguments and whether the budget fixed by the city council is its own court budget and we can do what we want with that court budget, given the case law that Vice Mayor Reese was alluding to earlier. But at the end of the day, that's not what we're here to do. That's not what we're seeking to do. We're not challenging the city charter in any way. And by the way, the city charter is the same city charter. That's the city charter in City of Henderson and the City of Sparks and the City of Las Vegas and the City of North Las Vegas. It's not a unique city charter. And so we're not here to do any challenge or pose any challenge to the city charter. We're here working within that city charter, asking for the resolution to fix the sal, salary of the ju, judges pursuant to this resolution that is consistent with how the city attorney's salary is set as well.
Okay, so you're saying that the other cities currently have their salaries set up in, in their charter?
They have the same resolution that the salaries of the bench have to be set by resolution of the city council.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So I guess I don't know if that really answered my question, so.
I, I, you know, I think the question posed is should, could, should the judges or should the bench be setting their own salaries? Right? Given the case law, given the separation of powers?
Well, I mean, if it was stated that they have the ability to set their own salaries, because I was on that agenda briefing as well, then why do we need to change it?
So I'll tell you my answer to it. It might not be the answer you're looking for, but they, we set their budget. And once we do that, it goes away from us and what they do with it i- is really them. Now, to their credit and to this jurist's thoughtful approach, he's saying, I am part of this city and the city of Reno and want to do what the charter tells us to do. I probably, if I were a lesser person and less thoughtful about it, could do what I wanted, but he doesn't want to do that. So some future judge, not this fine judge in front of us today, could say, pound sand, City of Reno, we don't care what you think we can do, we'll do what we want. But they're not trying to do that. Uh, that's the shortest answer I can give to you. And it might not be right. Get two lawyers, you can get five opinions.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from the colleagues? Okay, um, uh, I'll make the motion. I move to approve the resolution placing the annual salary for the bench at 10% above the top of the salary range for the court administrator retroactively to July 1st, 2023. I have a motion that I've made, a second by uh, Ms. Taylor. Any additional questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, I'm just not going to follow up. I had actually, you know, the, the city attorney's deputy resolution was set in the eighties, I understand. That's a resolution that just rolls forever, a lot like the council's one, that is on an automatic escalator. And I don't believe in public budgeting that way. You lock off decisions when you put a resolution in and it has budgetary rollover consequences. The judges' salaries either get set by themselves, in my view, from however much we want to park into that department each year, or they're part of the suite of the resolutions of compensation that we do every year, along with how we do, you know, bargaining agreements for two or three years. That's the way you budget in an organization. No one should be entitled to an escalator that lasts as a 40-year, you know, uh, clause in their employment contract. And, you know, it's pretty well documented what I tried to do on those early years because the council one went into effect right, right before I came on. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Breckus. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. We're moving on to item D four, David Ford, which is a presentation from Mrs. Sparza.
Mrs. Sparza, welcome and good afternoon.
I'm sorry, and we do have public comment from Grant Denton.
And Madam Clerk, I think I saw a number of written correspondence on this issue as well. Um, did you want to add that to the mix?
I will as soon as uh, Mr. Denton is done speaking today.
All in good time, Mr. Denton.
For the record, Mr. Denton, uh, Grant Denton. Um, so I've been, I'm speaking, of course, for this uh, item. Um, I've been working with homeless and addicted population in Reno for the last seven years. And you guys know, as, as well as we do, that we get attacked often, you get attacked often. Reno gets attacked for how they home, handle their homeless problem. And so a few years ago, I was curious where this homeless utopia of services is that people keep comparing us to. And so I've had friends over the last, over the course of the few years, host me in different cities, nine cities to be exact. And uh, to, to look at their homeless services, to tour how they're solving their problem, what they're doing. And we know one thing for sure, and we know a few things for sure. One is that um, solving this problem is like building a car around a guy that's jogging. It's very difficult. It's a moving target. There's a lot of moving, uh, there's a lot of people involved, so it's not easy. Another thing is that there's cities that are doing certain things right and other things not so right. One thing's for sure though, is that not one city that I've went to or visited has an outreach program as robust, as effective and as successful as ours. What we've done with Reno, uh, the Clean and Safe Team, what we've done with collaborating with other agencies, nobody collaborates like us. Nobody knows their population on the streets like us. When I say successful, um, our measure of success is who we're getting off the streets, who's staying off the streets, people that we're, that we identify with, building rapport with folks, building trust, and also moving folks to the next phase um, of their lives. And so I haven't, and even though I don't think that any place has it all together, this is a good start. We're doing good. This program, unlike any other program, uh, I've, and I haven't seen one that actually u, uses and engages their homeless population to clean the streets, to clean the river, to clean the railroad tracks. Um, and, and incentivizes them for that. It gives our homeless a platform for purpose. 80% of my employees come from these streets and were in my program and started with this outreach program. They're self-sufficient, they're contributing members of society, and we can do that on a larger scale. Um, so of course, I'm speaking for this um, to get past. It's um, it's unprecedented. And I think that we're setting an example for other cities to do the same. So thank you for allowing us to do it so far and hopefully you'll allow us to grow.
Mr. Denton, thank you so much. Also, I wanted to point out, I noticed the article in the Salt Lake City Tribune recently.
Yeah.
That was uh, Salt Lake who struggles with many of the same things that we all do. But they had come here to see your experience and work with you and really test and model their own pilot project for a safe camp in Salt Lake City. And I, I noticed that part of the article spoke to the early failings where we start out with tents, the tents didn't work on our environment, so then we moved to the mod pods. But I think that that's interesting because over the course of uh, of working with you, um, you are now the leader in this space and people are coming to the Karma Box. you are now the leader in this space, and people are coming to the Karma Box Project to see the work that you're doing, because they want to model and replicate your success. So congratulations in that regard.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Sparza, welcome.
Oh, hold on, Councilwoman Reese.
Someone on Zoom?
All in good time, you say.
Yes.
For the record, I would just like to state that we did receive correspondence on this item as six letters of written support.
Thank you so much. Now you get to go.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, City Council, Assistant City Manager Bryant Cynthia as far as the Chief Equity and Community Relations Officer for the City of Reno. Before you today is an item that was discussed at city council on January 26, 2022. Council directed staff to conduct a public process for nonprofits to apply for ARPA funding, specifically those that are going to address the ongoing impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. Before you, it will be an overview of the process and also the recommended recipients. 1 million was set aside from the ARPA funding that the City of Reno received for the nonprofit community. The process included a thorough application and scoring process. And at the conclusion of this process, four organizations rose to the top due to the scope of their work, alignment with strategic priorities, among other criteria that we will discuss momentarily. This is federal funding, so of course there are pretty stringent requirements for nonprofits to comply with throughout the process. This includes uniform administration, being an active registered organization with the system for award management, that's SAM.gov, and also be equipped to be audited at any time. Part of this process also includes reporting that is provided to the City of Reno on a quarterly basis. And of course, these are all aligned with the ARPA requirements. Along with eligibility and general federal criteria, excuse me, the projects also were included in the application as far as what's the description, what's the goal. A budget was part of the application process with an understanding of the funding available that was set aside by the City of Reno, and also how the project will directly impact the City of Reno. Certainly, aligning with strategic priorities is key. And at the conclusion of this process, 18 applications were received. When we look at scoring criteria, criteria, there were eight sections that were included. Execution of the project in a timely manner and ensuring that the project scalability is realistic was really important to the process. Addressing current needs that are longstanding from the COVID pandemic, we're still seeing impacts today. And then also addressing the quality of life for those that live in the City of Reno. And again, serving populations that were impacted by this pandemic. Before you are the four organizations selected that staff is recommending to move forward. These four nonprofits focus on homelessness, mental health, and behavioral health. These are all intersecting issues within the community. And the focus will really center on overall wellness and providing a continuum of care for vulnerable members of our community. You heard public comment today from both Karma Box and Rise. They provided an overview of the work they've been doing. And I'd like to share that this, these two organizations are integrated with the Clean and Safe Program, really taking the work out and meeting people where they're at with the lived experience approach that we may not always have. And we also recognize that each organization has a different approach and strategy, so they really are complementary to the work that's ongoing. Grant just mentioned, the Karma Box Project also has a component that helps collect debris, and they work with individuals that are transitioning, so really providing a space for growth for that community as well. The second, the third and fourth recipients that are recommended center on mental health, behavioral health. The children's cabinet specifically is seeking support for regional coordination related to youth mental health, as was recently shared by the Human Services Agency. Suicide ranks as the number one preventable cause of death for children in Washoe County with five suicides alone this year. So this position is really going to work on bringing private and public partnerships together and creating a pipeline for a more comprehensive approach to services for those in our community. And Bristol Cone, as was shared during a public comment earlier today, there is significant expansion and renovations that are in place. These additions will create additional support for those in need. Specifically, the Medical Detox Center. This allocation will support the addition of 20 additional beds, really right next to our downtown area. And Bristol Cone has been a longstanding partner in the community as well. And with that, before you is the recommended motion.
Okay, Mrs. Sparza, thank you so much for the update. Let's start here with Councilmember Brekis.
Thank you for your presentation and all your hard work on this effort. So I did have some questions. You didn't list the other 12, no, 14 applicants in your staff report, did you? Did I miss that?
No, they were not listed.
Okay, so I saw the scorecard, and it really caught my attention. And you're saying that these are all just like baseline mandates from the federal government, the guidelines?
The, there are ARPA guidelines, and then there are also components that were incorporated into criteria, alignment with strategic priorities, and other direction provided by council.
So it was a hybrid scoring focus with the federal guidelines and then other ones that staff felt were appropriate for the mission?
Yes, directed by council.
Directed by council, so we had that criteria.
Early in the conversations when ARPA was discussed, part of the issues or the components that came up with allocations was ensuring that funding is allocated wisely and also looking at organizations that are currently working with the city, aligned with city priorities, and also just providing equitable distribution of funding as well.
So the, the challenge I'm having is that you have a scorecard in here, and you just have it blank. You're not scoring any of the 18 applicants and making a, I didn't see, at least in the staff report, why these and not the other ones. And, you know, even if it was a qualitative, you know, discussion above and beyond the point scoring. And that does raise questions of fairness to me. And I brought this up a couple months ago when Zero Riverside came forward, and the staff did not even tell us who the other proposer was or give a justification for the other proposer. And that proposer had a meeting with me the next week and really felt that they had been wrongly treated by staff in terms of responding to a solicitation. And I don't want 14 other organizations to come forward and say, you know, "I got a 36 on this score. Why did, you know, Karma Box get a 28 and not miss the," you know? So I want that information. I think it's part of a complete, you know, consideration of this effort. And, you know, it is federal money. We need to prove to people who went to J.C. and put themselves on the line that we're being pruded on this. The, the state of Nevada just got zinged in the last nine months or so for not administering money in the last great federal rescue. And, and this just isn't reaching to the level for me of comfort. Did you, and I'll, I'll continue on, because there were other, other information I had about, you know, your parameters of decision-making. Do you have a response to that, though? The scoring, were these the top four scores?
These were the top four scores.
And they met all the baseline?
Correct. They met all the requirements.
Were there ties? Were other people like number five?
It was top four.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Brekis. Can I come now to Ms. Ebert?
Yeah, so I have concerns too. It would be nice if council could see the list of applicants in the scorecards. And I bring that up because I've really advocated for Hopes to get some of this funding from ARPA as well. I know that they had tried to get funding when we allocated the full $5 million to Community Health Alliance for the space that they're leasing from the City of Reno. And I have expressed several times that I feel like they should be considered for ARPA funds as well. They fulfill a need in the City of Reno that I don't feel that other organizations do. I mean, they help with housing and mental health and AIDS care. And I, I don't know how they scored or if they submitted, because I don't, I don't see that in the staff report. I, I see blank scorecards. So I think that that is a missing step, that council should be able to see who, who applied, what their scores were. And, you know, as I stated, I've several times said that I would like to see Reno engage with Hopes. I feel that they're a good community partner. They're building a campus right next to the CARES campus, you know? So I don't understand why they've yet to be considered for any ARPA funds. So maybe this isn't the right question for that, this specific grant at this point, because that ship has sailed, again. But I'd like to say again, I'd like Hopes to be considered in the future for ARPA funds. Or if ARPA funds are gone now, at what point are we going to consider them for, for any kind of funding? They also provide a lot of services through the City of Reno, and again, they're right next to the CARES campus. People going there are using, are going to be using them for all kinds of services. So I don't understand why they've been overlooked yet again. Is there any kind of answer to that?
You know, the, the applications were all assessed. They were ranked. And the top four are the ones that are before you today. Staff continues to monitor ARPA funding. And as we progress with this process, should there be additional opportunities for nonprofits to apply for funding? They can certainly apply at that point. But for this specific funding, the top four are the ones that are before you today.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Sparza, I sort of take the conversation in a different direction. So first of all, I think there is no doubt that there are hundreds of very worthwhile and really incredible nonprofits in this community. Earlier this week, I had a chance to go view the Katie Grace Foundation's warehouse, another example. There are, the list is long, whether you're talking about Step, the Step Programs, Safe Embrace, the DVRC. There are hundreds of well-deserving, including Hopes, of nonprofits that work in this community. But for my part, the kind of Hunger Games style where we, you know, identify them from top to bottom, and in some ways, it's like almost a shaming of the ones that don't rank quite as high. I make an assumption that they, all applicants who go through the process and perhaps are not identified in the top four slots can come to you and ask what they could have done to improve their standing, right? But I do think there's also a moment where we have to, as a body, take a step back from the absolute minutia of the scoring process and really turn that over to our staff, who are doing the work, who have created the matrices. I didn't create the matrices, so maybe I would have a different way of scoring, right? But I don't know that that's necessarily my role as a council member, is to go to that level. It's more that we know as a body, we allocated $1 million to a fund that was intended to go out to all community partners who wish to apply for it, that these have risen to the top. Quite frankly, I don't know Bristol Cone all that well. I, I know of their history, but I'm not in a position to say they're not worthy. If they ranked in the top four of this category, that was fairly done with an open process, and there were people on the committee to have judged it, I'm happy with that. I don't need to see where each person ranked on that. And, and certainly, I think those are things that perhaps are better left not in this discussion, but it's just me. I think there's, the valid concerns been raised by my colleagues. I just come out a little differently on it. I appreciate the work that each of these entities is doing. I can find no fault with the allocations and the goals, which each of one of them subsequently have to do. Obviously, too, there were these elements of the ranking and scoring process that had to do with, you know, working with existing nonprofits that had some track record, ones that could deploy the money in the given time, ones that met some of the financial reporting requirements and therefore gave us confidence that they would be able to spend the funds in the way that they were designed. And all of those things are part of that decision on how people scored and where they scored, as long as they were all scored fairly and evenly within the matrix, that is what it is. So that we've found a way to, it's kind of like a blanket. You try to stretch it and pull it, and a million dollars could have gone very easily to any one singular organization, right? But that you've come up with a way to spend the funds with four different organizations, doing different work, I think speaks to the nature of the application process. And really, I appreciate the work that went into it, and the decisions that are here are ones that I'll support. Okay, let's see if anyone has questions. Ms. Dewar, yep?
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to concur with a little bit of what's been said by almost everyone. Like Ms. Ebert, I actually asked specifically about Hopes myself, because they've, they have applied several times for things. And so I actually had that conversation in a briefing. And my understanding was that the categories of work that we prioritized was key here. I mean, in other words, they were ranked based on this particular mission that we set out. And so I have come to accept the ranking. I also reflected that I would have liked to see all of the applicants listed. I don't find it a fatal flaw, but I do think advisory to staff, I think I even brought it up in my briefing, that who all applied, and, you know, we all, as council members, we want more background and we want to understand, were there just five and four were selected? Or were there 20 and five or four were selected? I mean, that's important to know for us, just some context. So just going forward, I would suggest that we do, maybe in an attachment, at least list people who have applied for things so that we know. And maybe the amount of money or the proposed project that they applied should be listed. I think we do that with the arts grants. I'm not 100% sure when it comes to council, if we're just presenting the ones that the, the Arts and Culture Commission is recommending, or we, I don't know. I don't recall right now. But I'm just saying, as a good practice, it is helpful to have the, the whole bailiwick presented. That said, so again, I asked about Hopes myself, because I was thinking, surely they're doing, carrying out some missions that we're very interested in. But again, perhaps there's an opportunity in a future process, because we will have money left. I know that, one way or the other. There's got to be a final round here somewhere. So anyway, I, I'm going to support this item, but I just did want to recognize I had some similar thoughts to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Dewar. I'm going to come to you, Ms. Taylor, next.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Yeah, I, I can absolutely support this, and I think it's great news. I mean, this is something to be proud of, again, doing great, great work. And Mr., or Grant, what you said was fantastic to hear. I think we are just really going above and beyond, and I thank everybody from the bottom of my heart, because I know the work is grueling, so thank you. But back to the scoring criteria, when I was looking at it, looks to me, the questions were equitable, objective, measurable. Some of the things that might have been taken into account of why others got funding and some did or did not would have been whether they have received other funding from other sources, whether they align with the City of Reno, and whether they serve the people, whether they serve or their mission executes the City of Reno goals and objectives. So some of the things that I looked at on how they got funded and maybe others didn't, that might have gone into the decision. Is that kind of accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm, I'm very happy that we're able to do this, and just thank you for everybody and your hard work. And I'm honored to be able to support this.
Okay, Mr. Martinez. We'll come back to you. Oops, there you go. Sorry, I know that we're having a little technology problems up there.
Yeah, things are a little bit slow over here, but I appreciate the patience with me. Mrs. Sparza, thank you so much for the presentation and answering some of the questions. And maybe if you could provide a little bit more of that context for us. You weren't the only one scoring these applications with using that rubric that Councilmember Taylor has just mentioned was, you know, measurable and equitable questions. was, you know, measurable um and equitable questions. But there was a team of you all who scored all of these applications. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. And you know, the, these are very um difficult uh processes. Uh, you want to be fair and you want to ensure that you're reviewing each category thoroughly. Um, and that's how we, we, this, the team reached this uh, the top list for the four. Um, a million dollars sounds like a lot, but it certainly is, is, it's not that much. Um, and that's how we got here.
Yeah, definitely. And I, I appreciate um other council members acknowledging the great work that some of the other nonprofits and other nonprofits who didn't apply are doing in our community. And the need is really great. And so if there's any opportunity to keep supporting some of those efforts, definitely looking forward to those continued uh conversations and looking forward to supporting your suggestion in funding with this a million dollars from the state and local fiscal relief funds. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Breckus, I'll come back to you for round two.
Yeah, and you know, I don't know or have anyone else who, you know, I was thinking would apply or would be favorable. I just want a fair process. And you said something about categories. Were there categories that everyone gets one under a different bucket? The, oh, were there categories that you were trying to fill? Each one fills a bucket?
We were looking at, we had criteria.
Yeah.
Uh, and these, there is eight sections.
Yeah.
And these are the, the different sections.
That applied to everyone. Um, did you tell in your grant announcement that there would only be four recipients? And the average amount or something like that?
No.
You know, another way to look at it, council, is, you know, we want capacity in the community to do these human services. And maybe a better approach would have been to spread it out to, you know, the ones that met all the minimum threshold. Maybe, I don't know, you know, maybe 13, you know, maybe five got rejected because they didn't meet the minimum thresholds, or maybe at 13. But maybe another approach would have been to spread it out just to help some organizations. I continue to be um, to struggle because um, you know, we didn't say we were only going to go to four. There could have been a reason to spread it out. We don't know who the other ones were. We don't know the scoring of them. We don't know their proposal. It's just not fair, nor, it, it's not fair. And um, I am going to, you know, I've, I've mentioned earlier today about how the city manager, you know, has, has not given me access to staff and falsely says that it's because of a hostile hostility I have to our staff. That is not true. He's the one under investigation for retaliation against me. But under normal circumstances, Monday morning, when I've read the agenda over the packet, I would have caught this and said to the city manager, hey, can we have the other list of them? The scorecard? You don't have, you have a scorecard, but you don't have it filled out? Can we supplement the materials? But that dialogue has broken down for me with this manager. But I certainly think it would have been a way to say, hey, remember when we had zero Riverside? And those other people came to the table and they weren't even mentioned? And they went a lot of work to do their proposal. What if some of these other 14 did a whole lot of, you know, grant application work that you, you know, had a packet of? And that's not fair. So I will not be supporting. And I will be going up and making a public records request for every single proposal and the scoring. And I wish I didn't have to do things in my job this way, but the manager has put me in this place. And I'm not comfortable getting three phone calls next week from nonprofits about what they felt was unfair, lack of transparency on the council in administering federal funds. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Breckus, thank you so much. For my part, Mrs. Sparza, the process has been open, transparent, fair. Um, I'll disagree with my colleague from Ward One. Uh, it is a, a process that is laid out. I wish we had more money and we could spread it around. I, I don't believe in the concept of giving everyone some just because they applied and also don't believe that we should make it so that none of them are successful. If everybody gets five bucks, it doesn't help any of them. So ultimately, I think you've navigated a difficult road here. I, I trust the decision and the buckets that you've laid out. And so um I will make the motion to approve the allocations for Karma Box Rise, the Children's Cabinet, and Bristol Cone to the total of $1 million in state and local fiscal relief funds received through the American Rescue Plan Act. That'll be my motion. And I have a second by Councilmember Dewar I heard first. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none, I'll call, oh, go ahead, Ms. Dewar.
I, I just wanted to say, I didn't get a chance, that although I noted um some that didn't receive, uh, it should be noted by my second, I'm completely in support of those that we are awarding. And I have a, you know, I worked with Bristol Cone in the past, um, not, not part of their organization, but just with them as an agency administrator. And I think uh they and all of them, uh, whether it's um Karma Box or um Children's Cabinet, um, or I think our fourth one, um, I'm destroying.
Rise.
What's that?
Rise.
Rise.
Rise, rise. Thank you. I think they do magnificent work. So I didn't want my comments to be misconstrued that somehow these weren't worthy. I think they do fantastic. I have close personal knowledge of virtually all of them. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dewar. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify.
Wait, I had a comment too.
Okay, Ms. Ebert.
Same, same comments as Councilmember Dewar. You know, these organizations are great. But again, you know, Hopes is something that, a, a group that does a lot of great work for the residents of Reno. And I, I think it's really overdue for us to work with them. Um, they do a lot for the residents that, that need it most in this community. Like I said, I, I don't know any other organization that's helping with um medical care for AIDS patients. They do transitional housing and mental health care and regular health care. I mean, they cover just a broad range of services. And they're a good partner to the city of Reno. And I think it's time that the city of Reno becomes a good partner with them as well. And that we um start considering them when we have opportunity to uh use ARPA funds um to uh, to give to these different types of organizations. So I, I will support because I think these other organizations are deserving as well. But um, you know, again, as we donated or allocated $5 million to a city of Reno facility for uh Community Health Alliance to use, I think that was a big missed opportunity for us to also um allocate some funds to uh Hopes or maybe even some other organizations as well. So thank you.
Great comments. Any other comments at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sparza. Madam Clerk, items G, yeah, so item G1.
Item G1.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on item G1?
Item G1, we have not received any public comment.
Any questions from council?
Um, I'm prepared to make a motion.
G1.
G1.
Girl or good one?
Right.
Sure, this is the discussion for appointments to the Truckee River Fund Advisory Committee. Ms. Dewar, you're prepared to make a motion or not?
I am.
I'm about to have some discussion.
Hold on a second. Ms. Dewar, hold on one second.
Well, I could discuss.
Hold on, Ms. Dewar. Let us bring forward a staff member. Who is the staff member responsible for this item? Ms. Huntsman.
I mean, I'm going to do my very best.
I know you are, every day. Okay, now that we have Ms. Huntsman at the uh lectern, Ms. Ebert, I'll turn, I'm sorry, Ms. uh Breckus, I'll turn the floor. You, you had questions, I think. Ms. Breckus, did you have questions on this item?
Yeah. Um, you know, I am on the Tamwah, so I'm pretty familiar with, with what they do. Um, and we have two appointments to make. And I'd just like to have some discussion about these applicants. I don't think it's a Mrs. Huntsman job. I think it's an us job.
Okay, I understand. So do you have a nomination or you are?
I, I do. I want to, I want to.
Hold on one second. Normally, when these items have come before council, the person, there's a recommendation. Sometimes it's by the body that recommends. Sometimes it's by the lower body. Is there a concern over who has been nominated? Because we haven't had a nomination yet. Do you want to go through each one of the persons individually? What is your desire to do here, Ms. Breckus?
Well, I heard a motion.
Well, we would.
And I'm also a member. It's rare that we have two people, three people who are members. I've been the longest-serving member on Tamwah. And rather than jump to, you know, the chair asking for a motion, I just wanted to hear um discussion on the nominations. And I'm fine to not be the one to start. So if you would like to talk to the member who is remote and have them start the, kick off the discussion, I'm happy with that.
Ms. Dewar, I'll look to you for a motion.
A motion.
And can I just clarify? This isn't a body of Tamwah. So it's, it doesn't like report to Tamwah. It's, it's a, it's a subsidy. It's like a function where Tamwah donates to this advisory committee. And the advisory committee is the one that actually makes motions and spends that money. But they, they, I have the documentation. They do not, they're not a part of Tamwah.
Okay, Ms. Dewar, I'll look to you for a motion.
Okay, well, I also don't mind just sort of going through the applicants. I mean, um, I, I know some of the people on here, about half. And I think they, we have some excellent uh people to choose from here. I just wanted, one of them is our own, very own staff member, uh Nathan Uliat with Parks. He's newer, um, just six months, within the six months. Um, we also have a person that I, I is very high on my list, which is Darcy Phillips, who's head of KTMB, also newer in that role. Um, but I respect both of them tremendously. My first choice was uh Peter Gower for a couple reasons. Um, in the past, the Truckee um River Fund Advisory Committee has had a, a representative uh from the Nature Conservancy for many years. Um, they haven't for a little while. And Mr. Gower happens to serve on the Nature Conservancy and is also, of course, just performed eight years of uh very challenging service on our Planning Commission, Reno Planning Commission. Um, and has a um certain knowledge of the river and environmental ethic that I think would be very useful on this committee. So he's one that, you know, if I was to make a nomination, I would include him um as one of two. Um, I also have a high regard for our former um colleague, Neoma Jordan. She served on Tamwah for some eight years as a decider, a policymaker. So she's in my top list as well. Um, and then there are others here too, but I would probably say those were my four top people. And then I'll, I'll open it to the rest of the people to discuss.
Okay, does anyone have any more points to make on this issue? Ms. Breckus?
Yes, thank you. Um, I de, I defer to Ms. Clerk who says she has the resolution. I just know from Tamwah that we budget for this fund and we accept the recommendations and then we take action on those. There may be a matter of determination, but I'm pretty familiar with it. And Tamwah does a great job telling us how this fund is used and always historically. And part of that history, and I did call the Tamwah GM, um, is that the Nature Conservancy has had a representative on the board, an employer or a contractor, but they've also sought money from the fund. And I, I have a problem with that. I, I think that an organization that seeks money from the fund should not have a seat at the table. Um, I don't think they can serve, serve both. So for those reasons, I, I think Peter Gower is a fine person. I think he did well as a planning commissioner, but he is shown on his resume as a um, having a work employment relationship with the Nature Conservancy. So I would not support him. Now, Mr. Um, Uliat, our um Parks Director, I think the city of Reno has also sought money from the fund before. And I was unclear if he was, um, because they put a, a ward down. Um, is he supporting, and I guess this is for Ms. Bryant because he's in your chain of command, is Mr. Uliat applying as a city representative to this board? Or is he applying as a resident of Reno?
Resident of Reno, I believe.
Okay. I'm not comfortable with one of our staff members um doing that role. And I also don't think that there's precedent for staff being on. And you know, if he's a resident, that's fine, but he's new here. He's got a big job. Um, I, I think he should, you know, maybe engage in his personal time on things that don't intersect with his um, intersect with his um, you know, those, his elected officials in the city organization partner. So those are the two that I did object to. Um, Ms. Jordan, I served with her. Um, I'm not going to support her at this time. I, I know, I did serve with her on there. But I, I think the shadow of a cooling off period still follows her a little bit, um, because she, she had a, a fine for um not honoring the, the cooling off period. And she's just made it, made it out of that. And I think she needs a little more time. The ones that really caught my eye because they have expertise and don't seem to have any conflicts of interest were um, well, John Soberg, who I do not know, but he seems to be a retired person, Megan Miranda, Darcy seems fine, and Peter, um, what was Peter's name? Stanton. So those are the ones that, and, and, and Mr. Lyon as well, Preston Lyon. So those are the ones that I was comfortable with. And um, I don't know if you want Ms. Um Dewar to make the motion, but um I've, I've stayed the ones I object to and the ones who I think would bring some very added um value to it.
Okay, I'll move to nominate Peter Gower and Neoma Jordan.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second additional discussion at this time?
Yeah, I won't support. I'll be watching to see um any conflicts if they arise. And I think it's an unfortunate choice. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or concerns at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item G2, Madam Clerk. Give you a second to get back over there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So we're on item D, uh, G2, which is appointment to the Regional Planning Commission from our Reno City Planning Commissioner members.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any registered, nor have we received any correspondence.
Okay, and my understanding is that the recommendation of the Planning Commission has been Harris Armstrong and Carrie Romeyer?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll move to make those appointments.
I want to ask a question about this, could I?
Okay, hold on a second. I've made a motion. It will see if I get a second. If I do, okay, I've got a motion, a second. Now we'll open the floor for conversation.
Yeah, I don't want to talk on the motion. I want to talk on the item. So you jumped over our rules of discussion. It states that Mr. Um, and this is for staff, Mr. Um, what's his name? Veltto is ineligible. We don't have term limits. Why is he ineligible?
He's currently appointed to the board.
Oh, so he's the third one on the board already?
Correct.
Okay, so we bring on Mr. Harris Armstrong. And the last time, I think when Mr. Veltto was appointed, um Sylvia Villanueva's name came forward. And the council made the unusual um step of not appointing her. Did she seek that appointment, do we know?
I can't speak to this. I don't know if uh Mr. Pingree can.
Oh, are you the staffer? Okay, great.
Hi, Chris Pingree, Director of Development Services. Um, no, not that we're aware of at this point. Um, it was the nomination from the Planning Commission was Mr. Armstrong and Ms. Romeyer.
Okay, okay, I can support that. Thank you. And then Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Veltto, is his appointment, when does his appointment come up?
I don't have that information in front of me, but it should be.
I believe the appointments run co-terminals to their appointment to the Planning Commission, so it would expire.
With your appointment on the Planning Commission?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll call for the question.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Ms. Dewar.
I just think it's important, if Mr. Pingree could stand up again. I think it's important that uh we not have confusion about this. My under, I just want to get the process down. And I'd asked Mr. Pingree about this earlier. And I believe he confirmed that it's actually the Planning Commission themselves who nominate the representatives, and we confirm it. Could you just go over that briefly for us, Mr. Pingree?
What you stated is correct. Um, the Planning Commission makes the nominations and you confirm.
Okay, so they, they nominated Mr. Armstrong and Ms. Romeyer, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I completely concur. I think it's great choices. So thank you.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're moving on to item G3, which is um a revised by law for the Building Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not have any registered, nor have we received any correspondence.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Taylor, a second by Ms. Dewar. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We're moving on to item H1, which is City Council Comments.
Okay, let me uh start with the folks in the room. Uh, any uh comments under item H1? Ms. Breckus? Okay, let me start with the folks in the room. Any comments under item H1? Ms. Breckus. Anything under H1?
Oh, I didn't, I, I.
Sorry, I might have been looking the other direction.
You directed that to me. I have nothing.
Okay, no problem. Let me go now to Councilmember Duer on the phone.
I don't have anything to do.
Councilmember Martinez.
Nothing from my end. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ebert. Thank you so much, Ms. Taylor. Okay, and I have nothing. So we'll close out that item and come back to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We're seeing as our I1 was withdrawn earlier today, we do not have a 6:00 PM hearing. So we are going into closing public comment, item J1. And we do have one commenter, Damian Cole.
Okay, Mr. Cole, thanks for sticking with us most of the day. I know you had to leave part of it, but welcome back to the lectern.
Thank you. I did, I did have an, I'm sorry.
Hold on, Mr. Cole, give us one second and I'll come back to you.
I did have an announcement.
Oh, yeah, no problem, Ms. Ebert.
I just wanted to say that we're having a, a grand reopening of Park up in my ward, Ward 4, Dorothy McElton Park, this Saturday, October 14th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So very excited about that. We're going to have a lot of events for kids. We're going to have some pumpkins and some food trucks. And just really excited to have the opening of the new play equipment. So just wanted to call that out and just say thank you to the staff for all their efforts and, and putting this event together. So thanks.
Yeah, super cool. I can't wait for the kids to be able to use that equipment up there. It's all adaptive, right?
Yeah.
Fully adaptive. Yeah, it's a very, very incredible part. Congratulations.
Very excited about it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cole, welcome back. Sorry for that slight detour.
Thank you very much for letting me talk again. I, first of all, thank you very much for passing D3. I just want to say it's a good first step. We need what now called micro mobility, used to be called bike networks. Everyone can use it. I want to clarify for the record, one thing, I don't know if it was directed at me directly or if it was someone else, but during the discussion for D3, it was stated that someone made public comment about how there was no public process. I don't know if that was directed at me, but I didn't say there wasn't one. I said was flawed. The flaw was that we started at like step C or D, which was, we've already selected the routes, we've already selected the designs. What do you think of them? I'm at the, the position of, well, what routes are we picking? Why? And what are the rubrics that we're looking at? Safety and level of service is only one of them. Many different things like connectivity, things like that, the directness of the route, how, how often would people actually use them? If we're trying to get it done right the first time, we have to do feasibility studies, things like that. Second thing, Ms. Breckus, I share your frustrations about tons of car traffic going through. The problem, and I know that you probably know this, the problem is that in 1966, when they created the I-80 freeway, Federal Highway Administration decided that America should have cars going right through the center of downtown. So unlike Europe, we don't have bypasses. We have them going right through downtown. So now we're stuck with it. I don't know what to do about that. I've been bracking my brain. Third thing, thank you very much for sealing a new top coat of asphalt onto the Truckee River Bike Path. Wonderful experience. I would give it 90%. There's 10% left. And this is a big concern is that the crews, when I talked to them, when they were doing the job, they were under the impression that they were going to go over it a second time and they were going to steamroll it afterward. That didn't happen. So what occurred is now the entire path is bumpy, which means there's good traction, but it has a lot of dips and hills all over the path. And now that it's raining, still water is collecting in many different areas along the path. This is going to turn into sheets of black ice come winter. If we're talking, talking about using the path as more than just recreational, but actual arterial route, in other words, a bike freeway for micro mobility, you gotta, you gotta level it out. So when they were shoveling and putting the, doing the squeegee stuff, they were leaving big, like, you know, trails of uneven path. And I said, oh, can you, can you flatten that part out? And everything sounded, we're, we're going to be coming back. We're going to be steamrolling it. We're going to put a second coat. It didn't happen. So now we have the potential of the entire path becoming very dangerous when it starts snowing and ice forming under sub-freezing temperatures. So that's, got to do it. Or let me borrow a steamroller. I'll do it myself for free of charge. Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor. And with that, just for the record, we did receive additional public comments, nine of them, which were either received after 4:00 PM yesterday or general in nature. Seven letters of favor, two letters of opposition. Those have been distributed to the Reno City Council and will be available at the close of the meeting on the Reno.gov meeting portal. And with that, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.